Given that it is 7:02 and we do have a quorum, I will call the meeting to order and begin my opening remarks and then we can always loop back to introduce other folks as they arrive. All right. Good evening and welcome to the February 11th, 2025, meeting of the planning board. First, we'll take a roll call to introduce board members and staff. Sean Weller.
Here.
Phil Giordano.
Here.
I'm Ellen Rawlings. I'm also here. We're also joined by Jess Cole, our recording secretary, Elijah Romulus, our town planner, and Jack Hatfield from Western Media Center. And as other folks join, I will introduce them as well. This meeting is recorded by Western Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television Comcast Channel 6 and Verizon Channel 42. Meetings are also live on the Westwood Media Center's YouTube channel. If you're interested in joining the meeting via Zoom, you can find the login directions in the planning board's meeting notice that is posted to the calendar section of the town's webpage at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot Town Hall dot Westwood dot MA dot US forward slash. We will begin the meeting with only the board members and staff unmuted and on video. As the chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they are not speaking in order to minimize background noise. For applications, the chair will first invite the applicant to address the board and give a presentation summarizing what is being requested. Board members receive the application materials prior to the meeting and will have reviewed them. Board members may ask questions during and following the presentation. Staff and outside experts will provide comments to the board. For agenda items that are not a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the board chair. For agenda items that are for a public hearing, the public will be given an opportunity to comment after board discussion. Public comment will only be read or heard once the chair has opened the public comment period. The chair will ask for any final public comments before closing public comments. During public comment, attendees may use the raise hand feature to speak or type a question in the Q and A at the bottom of your screen. Attendees will not be on video but will be unmuted if called on during the public comment portion. To raise your hand, click on the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen and wait for the host to call on and unmute you. You may then click lower hand once you've been called on. For those participating by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Once unmuted, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the chair and only have one person speaking at a time. Those making public comments will have three minutes to speak. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be limited. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Following the public comment portion, the board will deliberate and make a decision or continue the hearing to a specific future date. All remote meetings require the votes be taken by roll call. When a motion and second has been made, the chair will ask if there is any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote and will then restate the results of the vote. All right, and we've been joined by Kate Ne. Good evening, Kate.
Good evening. Sorry to be late, Madam Chair.
No worries at all. I had a lot to read, so I figured I'd just get that out of the way. All right, Elijah, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
Yes, so item number two, the consideration of modification for the Fox Meadow Estates, that was a placeholder in the event that the applicant were to put forth an application. They have not at this moment, so I would suggest striking that from the agenda for tonight.
Okay, procedurally, can we do that? We don't have to open and it's not a public hearing, so we can just make a, do we need to vote to strike it from the agenda?
No, this is, this is the modification application. And it's a two-part, the other being the A and R.
Okay, so does that, items two and three?
I would still take up item three later in the meeting.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, noted, so we will begin with item one, which is 30 per Wall Street. Public hearing for the consideration of an environmental impact and design review approval for change of use at 30 per Wall Street, continued from 12:10:24.
Yes, so just to update the board, the, this was a continuation from the December 12th planning board meeting and, or rather, the December 10th, 2024. And the applicant was looking to complete the application. That's why they had asked for the continuance. There were some site issues that the applicant apparently ran into, which was told to me through their lawyer and ultimately made the project cost prohibitive, among other issues with the site that they ran into. And so they have requested the board grant a withdrawal without prejudice in the event that they're to reapply.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members on this particular item? Excellent. As this is a public hearing, I will give a moment for public participation. If there's anyone who would like to comment or ask a question about this item, before we move on to motions, please raise your hand or enter your comment or question in the Q and A. Please include your full name and address. I'm not seeing any hands go up, nor am I seeing anything in the Q and A. So with that, I will close public participation on this item and I would entertain a motion.
I move that the planning board grant the request for withdrawal of the environmental impact design review EIDR application for the purposes of a change of use of the existing building involving interior renovations, minor exterior upgrades, and site improvements at 30 per Wall Street, as described in the application therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on November 8th, 2024, without prejudice.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Phil?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion carries. I would now entertain the second motion.
I move that the planning board close the EIDR public hearing for the change of use of the existing building involving interior renovations, minor exterior upgrades, and site improvements at 30 per Wall Street.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Sean?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries and that public hearing is closed. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, which was agenda item number two, which Elijah suggested we strike from the agenda, and it sounds like that's all we have to do. So we can move on to agenda item number three, which is Fox Meadow Estates, consideration of application for modification of the Fox Meadow Estates, formerly Captain's Crossing definitive subdivision approval to replace the easement addressed in condition 6A and 23 of the planning board's August 10th, 2024 definitive subdivision approval decision with a new easement that fully corresponds with the actual physical layout, the emergency accessway, and with the actual layout of utilities. All right, Elijah, do we have anyone here representing the applicant?
We do not have anyone this evening. It was in relation to the previous agenda item. I can go into a little detail with the board. As you stated, Madam Chair, that it was tied to the Captain Crossing subdivision, which is now referred to as the Fox Meadow Estates subdivision. There was first, a, the application needed to reapply for the A and R based on the lot line adjustments that the applicant was looking to to pursue, that would have triggered a condition in the previously approved subdivision. In addition to that, there were easement issues as relates to utility and emergency access. And so the us on our end are also looking through registry recordings and the applicant is looking on their end in terms of a possibility to either maintain the easement or adjust it. And so the applicant has requested a continuance slash waiver of time for the for the A and R plan to March 4th, 2025, in order for them to do the due diligence on there and as well as myself and staff on the town side.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members on what we just heard? I am not seeing any. Okay, Elijah, do we need to take action to continue that as this is not a public hearing or can we just continue it?
That's correct. You would take a vote to continue if.
The timeframe's an issue, Elijah?
With continuing and asking for the waiver, they were able, the board can continue it to the.
But we accept their waiver would be what we do. Okay.
Gotcha. Yeah, all right. Excellent. If there are no other questions, then I would entertain a motion.
All right, I move that the planning board accept the applicant's waiver of time pursuant to MGL Section 81P of Chapter 41 and continue the approval not required plan for 25 Fox Mill Drive slash 300 Fox Hill Street dated December 12th, 2024 and revised through February 4th, 2025 to Tuesday, March 4th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Kate?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. All right, thank you. So that will continue at our March 4th meeting. And then our next agenda item is number four, warrant articles. Public hearing for zoning bylaw and general bylaw amendment articles for the May 2025 annual town meeting. As this is the first time we are discussing this, I will read a portion of the public hearing notice to open our meeting officially. The Western Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on February 11th, 2025 at 7:00 PM via Zoom to consider the following proposed amendments to the Town of Westwood zoning bylaw and official zoning map and Town of Westwood general bylaws. The meeting will be filmed live by Westwood Media Center WMC, available for viewing on Comcast Channel 6, Verizon Channel 42, and WMC's YouTube. Those wishing to participate are encouraged to use Zoom by following the link below or going to zoom.us and clicking on join meeting before entering the meeting webinar ID, Zoom link. Is it necessary for me to read that link, Elijah? It's a bit cumbersome.
No, I don't think, yeah.
Just the I think that's sufficient. Interested persons, should I, what, what, what other part? Just the summaries of each article?
I can share on the screen the Zoom information for you, Madam Chair, and then.
Thank you.
And then, yes, I would just say the headlines for each.
For each article.
Correct.
All right, Article PB dash one, zoning bylaw amendments relative to accessory apartments. Scrolling down. PB, sorry, wow, that was long. Article PB dash two, zoning bylaw amendments relative to affordable housing. Article PB dash three, zoning bylaw amendments relative to underlying zoning district designation of parcel on Providence Highway. Article PB dash four, zoning bylaw and or zoning map amendments relative to mixed-use multifamily residential overlay district. Article PB dash five, zoning bylaw and or zoning map amendments relatable relative to flexible multiple-use overlay district FMUOD administrative office research ARO district and or zoning overlay designation of parcel on East Street. Article PB dash six, housekeeping amendments. And Article PB dash seven, zoning bylaw amendments relative to major business development MBT. All right. Is that sufficient, Elijah?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, with that, I'm happy to hand over the floor to town staff to lead us in this conversation.
Yes, so I have a presentation that I will be sharing with the board. That's set up. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
All right, so this is for those that were in attendance at the January FinCom public meeting, this is a, an expansion of that presentation for the for the board as well as the general public for a little background information on the warrant articles. Madam Chair, my thought was that I can go through each article, so I'll do like the overview of the first one. We can stop, take comment and discussion and then move on to the following ones.
I think that makes sense. Thank you.
All right, so the first article is proposed article PB one, accessory apartments. So on August 6th, 2024, Governor Healy signed the Affordable Homes Act into law, Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024. Section eight of the Affordable Homes Act amends the zoning act to allow ADUs up to 900 square feet to be built by right in single-family zoning districts. This was enacted in part to address the rising housing costs and homelessness experienced across the Commonwealth. This allows ADUs by right beginning February 2nd, 2025. And so with us advertising the zoning amendments, we are looking to codify changes to our zoning law to reflect the state's law. And so this is in regards to 760 CMR, the rules and regulations for protected use accessory dwelling units. And it was to encourage the production of accessory dwelling units throughout the Commonwealth with the goal of increasing the production of housing to address statewide, local, and individual housing needs for households of all income levels and at all stages of life. Some parts of the regulations, they were finalized on January 31st. And components to the law include the term accessory dwelling unit being a self-contained housing unit, inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements that maintains a separate entrance either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the public dwelling, a principal dwelling sufficient to meet the requirements of state building code for safe egress, that it is not larger in gross area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller, and is subject to such additional restrictions as may be imposed by municipality, including but not limited to additional size requirements size restrictions and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rentals as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 64G. Provided however, that no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of an accessory dwelling unit that is not a short-term rental. And so how this kind of applies on the ground is that one ADU on a single-family property is quote-unquote by right. That ultimately means that a building permit and an occupancy permit is still required for such a project. The owner occupancy may not be required of either the principal dwelling nor the ADU. For parking, it cannot require off-street parking if within half a mile of a transit station and more than one on or off-street parking space for all other ADUs. Protected use ADUs may be either part of the part principal dwelling or a detached ADU. Local zoning may not prohibit a protected use ADU that is detached. And then density and unit caps. Protected use ADUs do not count towards density limitations nor unit caps. And as you can see on the screen, there's kind of six different variations of what an ADU could be. It could be a detached unit where you have the main principal dwelling and then a separate smaller ADU. It could be an attached dwelling in which they are attached but have their own entrances. There could be an interior upper level unit. There could be an interior lower level unit, which were are still in the envelope of the principal dwelling. There could be a above garage unit or a garage conversion to kind of demonstrate some of those differences. And ultimately, what we will be looking at is amending Section 8.5 of our bylaw. So accessory apartments will be titled accessory dwelling units. As we had men, as I mentioned before, one ADU will be allowed by right, still requiring a building permit and certificate of occupancy. The owner occupancy requirement will be removed. Floor area and parking requirements will be adjusted to conform with the new law. The special permit process will be considered for a second ADU, so you know, one is by right. However, we still have the ability to you know, seek a special permit for the second one. And then we made some adjustments to the warrant article in light of the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities, HLCs, rules and regulations which I had shown earlier, which were posted on January 31st. Yeah, and that covers my overview of the proposed article.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with board member questions and comments, and then we can take public comment on proposed article one. So I'll open up the floor to my colleagues. Any board member questions or comments on this proposed article? Phil?
Could we bring up the draft that was available, I think, because it's helpful, I think, if we look at some just a couple of language issues that I had.
For sure.
All right, we zoom into 8.5.3. Just so I can see it down the bottom.
All right, let me see if maybe I can stop. One second. Yeah, seems like the, I can try to pull up the, give me a second, I can pull up the. See if this one go through.
There we go. A little further, yeah, 8.5.3. And then just, if you could catch the bottom of that and then going into the top of the next page. Right there, perfect. Where, so, great, the, the, thank you for zooming in. The last part where it talks about the special permit on the second ADU. And it says bottom, third line, third line from the bottom to the right, that the proposed second ADU poses no negative or adverse impacts to the public health, public welfare or safety. I would add the word material. I mean, the word no negative, there's always going to be some possible negative impact and that is like, just when I read this, I, my lawyer brain said that's an extremely, so I would say no material negative or adverse impact. And then I think that works very well. Insert the word material after the word no. Yeah, yeah, if you put it as a comment or something like that. Then the next sentence. If the Board of Appeals, comma, in its sole discretion, votes to grant a second ADU special permit, the board may impose reasonable conditions. The, the issue I have is kind of more of a, of, kind of a, a little bit higher than just, you know, playing with words. Sole discretion and reasonableness are usually at odds with one another in a drafting kind of concept. Reasonable is usually like an objective standard. The reasonable person will be a measuring stick for how things are being done. But if the Board of Appeals has sole discretion, it typically does not need to impose reasonable conditions. So I just, my problem is I think those two are just kind of contradictory and how that would apply. I think it's probable that the word reasonable conditions, I would just say conditions and leave the sole discretion for the Board of Appeals is the way I, I would suggest, but I'm opening, I'm open to discussions on.
Thank you. Did, did anyone else, while we're on that particular item, did anyone else have thoughts on, on Phil's suggestions? It, it makes sense to me and I defer to someone with a legal background of that, so I'm, I'm good with your changes. But did anyone else want to weigh in?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I also wanted to say I'm, I'm, I appreciate the change, especially that first one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, just putting it on the side. I, it's more of a question at the end of that paragraph where it says a limitation of no more than one bedroom. I didn't see that as some, is there a rationale for that or what was? Why is the one bedroom in there are key? I, I mean, the rest of it, I didn't have any trouble with the rest of this.
Yes, I, my understanding would be you know, to be able to fit all of the necessary.
You know, kitchen, the cooking and everything else.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I assumed that's where it essentially would make sense because, yeah, you can't exactly fit, you know, three bedrooms. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, I guess. That's fine. I'm fine with the rest of that.
Thank you. Sean, I know you've had your hand up. I did see Kate's hand up. Did we have further discussion on this item before we move on to other aspects of this article?
Yeah, sorry, I, I just wonder if the, I appreciate the one-bedroom limitation, just to prevent somebody from turning a prime, single-family residential home into another animal entirely.
A boarding house of some sort or rental, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was thinking the same thing, like, my question was going to be, well, then, what's the line between an accessory dwelling unit and a two-family? You know, so I appreciate that suggestion in the language. Any other discussion around this? Or Phil, did you have anything else about this?
Not this particular section, further down on one, on one of the other, other paragraphs, but if we're still just talking about 8.5.3, I have no other comments on that one. Other, other paragraphs, but if we're still just talking about eight point five point three, I have no other comments on that one.
Okay, I, I saw Sean's hand was up, I wasn't sure, Sean, if you wanted to comment on this or if you had something else altogether.
My, my comments are something else altogether, so I'm happy to let Phil proceed. With everything he has and then I can layer mine on afterwards if it's not already addressed.
Great, thank you.
Uh, can we go down to then eight point five point four point two, down the bottom of the page? Right there. It says however, a single ADU is located within an existing structure that is non-conforming to dimensional requirements. So that's a limitation of non-conformance to only dimensional requirements. Do we, are we intentionally like excluding other non-conformance or whether it's? I mean, there could be a bunch of other issues that could make it non-conforming. But that was just a, looking for an explanation or add and to see if that's. I mean, is there other issues that we should consider whether? Setbacks, other things that could, that could come up.
So I believe. Requirements are related to the building footprint and then the height. The, the setback requirements, I, I think they. For the protected use ADU is in line with. Single-family lots, so it, it still would have to meet whatever.
And, and let me just qualify, I, I mean, this is a dimensional requirements provision, so I get. That may just be appropriate for that paragraph, I just didn't see that we caught it, at least unless, unless I missed it. Elsewhere, and so I just was just raising that if there's other provisions and maybe I missed them, but. I just wanted to just give that as a heads up or a flag.
Thank you. Kate, did you have something to add on, on this?
I did, I'm just, thank you, sorry. Um, I did, I'm just curious, you know, Phil or Elijah, are, you know, are we saying? An existing structure. Built before. This law change, or are we saying in future? If you have a non-conform, if you have, if you somehow get the ability to make a non-conforming structure. You still receive the benefit of getting an ADU, I feel like only if you are currently existing, you should get that. I don't know.
I think that's what the sentence says.
Is it?
If you are, it, well, that was the way I interpreted, which is. An existing building which is non-conforming. On dimensional requirements, so you have some, then it can still get an ADU.
I'm sorry to, to. Or, or Elijah, sorry.
So I think what that says right now is that if a structure exists at the time someone applies for an ADU. And that structure is non-conforming, then they can still use it for an ADU. If you're looking to say that the structure must exist as of the date of the approval of this section, then you'd have to put a specific date in there.
Yeah, or, I mean, is our, is our, is this an, this is a bigger question, is this an opportunity? To have structures conform or lose this? Could they lose this benefit? Is it benefit we could take away if they're non-conforming? That's kind of my question.
So I believe that the, the guidelines say that we cannot restrict. We cannot deny an ADU because the structure that it's in is non-conforming if we allow the existence of the structure. So say, say you have a single-family home that has no. Garage or shed or some, some additional structure, and you put one in and the garage setbacks are such that you can put it. You know, much closer to the lot line than you could for a living area. You go ahead and build that garage in twenty twenty seven and then in twenty twenty nine, you decide you want it to be an ADU. I believe the way the guidelines are currently written, we would have to allow that.
That, that was what I was thinking and worried about a little bit, because it struck me is non-conforming, but it's as of right. And it almost allows a little bit of a circumvention, so to speak.
I believe it does, I believe that's what the guidelines allow. So if you, if you wanted to think ahead. And build a garage and then later convert it to an ADU, that would be no different than if you have an existing garage and convert it to an ADU.
Okay, but if that's what they say, then we don't have a whole lot of flexibility around that.
That's a, a excellent question. Sean, I've seen your hand go up on this one and then it went down, was there something you wanted to add?
I was just going to echo Nora's comment that the guidelines released by the state stated as much that. A municipality may not prohibit the development of a protected use ADU. In an existing structure or principal dwelling or lot due to non-conformance. So, that's the language from the guide.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other discussion of eight point five point four point two? Alright.
Can we go to eight point five point four point four? The second sentence. I mean, it's a matter of, right, pretty much standard landlord-tenant law, but. Is this beyond our purview as to charging utilities? I mean, just kind of like in a general legal sense, if there's not a separate meter, you're not supposed to charge a tenant. For utilities and, and whatnot, but I didn't know if it belonged here and I'm open to your feedback, Nora.
I think that is admittedly a stretch and Amanda put that in as clarifying language to make people aware. To make tenants aware that they can't be charged for utilities if there's not a separate connection. But by putting it in here, the more I think about it, I think that. Adds a gray area that wouldn't be enforceable by our zoning enforcement officer. So you might be giving the impression that you could enforce something that you couldn't. If someone has, is living in an ADU that doesn't have separate utilities, they're renting the space. And their landlord attempts to charge them, they have other avenues to go about. Le- leaving themselves of charge.
I, I just, I don't even know if we have authority to be having put that sentence in there, and that's exactly what my concern was on that.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Phil, I, I echo that as well, as a former landlord, I, I. I'd be uncomfortable keeping that as part of our zoning bylaw, so I'm, I'm in favor of striking that.
I'll, I'll say having represented landlords who didn't comply, I can also be sensitive towards it.
There could be a way that Amanda could get that word out, we have a document on our website already about ADUs. And, and how you get one and what they can be used for, that could be added to the FAQs on that document as opposed to putting the zoning bylaw.
Yeah. Could we go down then? Eight point five. Point four, the thirty-three and the fifty percent, it's fifty percent, isn't it supposed to be?
Fifty percent.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the, because the, because of the strikeouts and whatnot, and then. Eight point five point. The next one. Yeah, the last sentence, said means of ingress and egress shall be as remote as possible from each other. A, I get the point you want for safety to be able to have other means of egress and, and ingress. But it is kind of an open-ended question that I really think is just not. A appropriate or B is worded, you know, in a way that is enforceable or something, it just caused me a lot of concern.
I think the intent was to ensure that there are two separate entrances on the.
And, and, and I get that, you, you may have an ingress, so, but what you have, suppose you have like a, a built, you know, a, a detached garage or something like that. You have two means of, you know, egress and ingress, but they're close to each other. The way this reads, it has to be physically on the opposite corner of the building or something else. And that is, I guess, a theoretical benefit, but it is not a practical or enforceable one, I don't think.
But that's actually enforceable under the building code for a residential structure. The building commissioner can require that under the building code. What we could do here, this is, this is one of the few areas where the town has some leeway. To direct design concerns, because it's something that applies to. All, all properties have, all residential properties have to have two means of ingress and egress. So what you could do, if you're concerned with the language, is you can say that the means of ingress and egress shall be as remote. As possible from each other as determined by the building commissioner.
Or I would, I would say. The, the, something to the effect of that, the, they should be. Separated within, you know, to provide as, as much distance as possible. The word remote is the one, is really the key word that I guess I'm having, it should, shall have. You know, maximum feasible distance from each other or something to that effect with, and then add in the building commissioner.
So how about the building commissioner shall determine whether the means of ingress and egress are sufficiently separate or?
That would work, I, I, or have sufficient distance from one another, something to that effect, Nora, I think would work, would be fine. And that's all I have for that.
Thank you. Kate, I had seen your hand up for this one.
Yeah, but now I'm happy with the edits we just made, thank you.
Excellent. Not seeing any other hands, aside from Nora's, on this one, Nora, did you have anything else to add on this one or?
No, sorry about that.
No worries, I know, I leave, I have the legacy hand a lot, and I, I appreciate that edit, I think that's clear. And I like that change as well. Alright, Phil?
I guess I'm leaving the show.
I sense you have a list.
Well, I, 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 I play lawyer, I'm sorry, I can't help.
No, don't apologize, I, I appreciate your eyes on this, in this, at this level, so, please continue.
Can we go down to the parking and just? For clarity on that provision. So. It says one off-street parking shall be provided. For each ADU, period, and that's definitive. Then it says, notwithstanding the above. No additional parking spaces beyond those required shall be required. When I read that, and, and then correct me if I'm wrong. It, when you read sentence one and then the notwithstanding sentence, that struck me as you don't have to go to two or more. But I didn't know if that was how it's realistically supposed to be worded or how we're. Because if you're with it, and correct me, I might have a misunderstanding about the guidelines, if it's within a half, a half mile of a commuter rail station. One parking is not required, isn't that correct?
That's correct, so I think.
The word additional gives the impression that it's two or more.
So I think what that probably should say is notwithstanding the above, no additional parking spaces beyond those required for the principal use. Pursuant to section six point one point three point one.
Yes, but, but then, then I'm good. And then down eight point five, point five, a couple. A little bit further on the four park, outdoor parking spaces. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, above where it says no more than four outdoor parking spaces. May be provided. To serve the, unless a special. Are we saying, when we say may be provided, as I immediately interpret discretion. Is it going to be, shall be required? Is that what we're trying to say as compared, because the word may is essentially a discretionary word as compared to the word shall. And provided is generally a, is a required, is not a requirement, but I think it was.
So this is amending a section we already have, and the intention here is to say. You have a single-family house, you have three parking spaces there, you add a fourth for the accessory, the ADU, you're okay. But if you had four already, and now you have to add a fifth for the ADU, that's not okay. You'll have to take away one of the ones that are associated with the principal building, or you'll have to obtain a special permit. So we have a section of our bylaw, section four point three and three point two, that simply doesn't let you have more than four parking spaces without a special. So that's, that's what this is trying to get at. As far as the, the mayor shall.
Then shall be.
Spaces shall, no more than four outdoor parking spaces shall serve the principal dwelling.
That.
And the ADU.
And the ADU unless a special permit, so that. That seems to work, Nora, if you, if you put the word shall before the word serve and take out may be provided too.
Yeah, I, I think that's okay, my only question would be, are you? Are you introducing a possibility of someone saying, well, these parking spaces aren't there to serve either the principal use or the, or the ADU? They're just for my guests or, you know, so I, I'd want to be careful how. Maybe what we want to say is that the. The property containing the ADU shall comply with the requirements of section four point three point three point two. Maybe, maybe that's all you said.
Unless a special permit, I mean, that would, then that would work. Because we're, we're essentially trying to, you know, draft around that and we don't need to.
Okay, so. Is this in addition to what's written, the property shall?
So, so I think what I would do is I would, I would delete the entire original section. And instead of what it had previously said, I would just say that.
Parking spaces for the principal dwelling and the ADU shall comply with section four point three point three point two. Unless a special permit was said for additional parking spaces is issued by the Board of Appeals, something to that effect.
Thank you, while I just typing, Kate, did you have something to add?
Yeah, sorry, can you hear me okay, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, great, I'm having all kinds of technical issues tonight, so sorry about that. I'm just curious, is the intention here that they would allot an existing? Parking space for this ADU, or are we asking them to create a parking space when they get an ADU?
They are still limited to four with the principal dwelling and the ADU unless they get a special permit.
But they are also required to create one new parking space for the ADU unless they're within a half mile of a, a transit station, so. But we're, that space would be in addition to the two that are required for a single-family house or the three that are required for a two-family house. Does that make sense?
It, it does, it makes sense, I'm, I'm also, sorry, I'm just catching up a little bit with, with the tech issues I had. So if you have a home that has four spaces, it's a single family, no ADU yet. You're, you would like to get an ADU for your in-laws or whoever. Can, can you allot one of your four to that ADU, or must you create a new parking space?
You may allot one of your four, so we would only require the minimum number of parking spaces, so a principal. Single-family home would need two, and if they added an ADU, they'd need three, the fact that they have four is not a problem. If they had five, they'd be having a problem already, so.
Exactly, right, okay, great.
Want to just say that they have to comply with this section of the bylaw.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yeah. I'm good with that, and I think that's. I'm good with that. And I think that's, that's all I have for today. I'm done.
For, for this article?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, great. Um, did anyone else have any questions or comments? From the board on this proposed article one on uh EDU? Sure.
Nora, you alluded to it earlier, and thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my primary question was around the two entrances. Uh, or the two means of egress and ingress. And I was wondering if, if that's a requirement that we set for single-family homes under the building code. And I wondered that in the context of the ADU guidelines. Seemingly being pretty strict about not having any site plan requirements that exceed those required of single-family homes.
Yep, so that, that's a question for Mike Perkins, our building commissioner, but it's my understanding that all. Uh, buildings containing dwellings must have two remote means of ingress and egress.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. I just wanna make sure we wouldn't get in any trouble there. And I appreciate all of Phil's comments on all of these fronts. I think. They are good improvements. My last question pertains to curb cuts. And, and dwellings. I don't know how we typically approach this for single-family. Dwellings, if there's a request for more than one curb cut, but I could foresee a. Certain property owner potentially wanting to. Say they've got some curb cuts already, they wanna add an ADU somewhere else on the property. And wanted to add another driveway. Is that something they are permitted to do by right? What steps would have to be taken to add that? And is that something that we can put any kind of reasonable restrictions on as part of this bylaw?
So curb cuts are not addressed in the zoning bylaw. That's something, if you want a curb cut, you simply go to the. DPW and fill out a, an application requesting a curb cut and they. As uh, I guess, being responsible for maintaining the road that you're cutting the curb onto, they have their own policies regarding. Where you can and cannot have a curb cut and how close they can be, how far apart. Um, whether or not there's a moratorium in effect that doesn't allow you to um. Damage the existing pavement. That's all through DPW. That's not something we address in.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, I had one quick question and it's kind of ancillary to the bylaw itself. When our total number of housing units are counted, are ADUs counted? Separately, or because they're accessory, are they just counted as part of the address that they're attached to? Nora, yes, thank you.
Currently. Um, EOHLC counts accessory units or, or they review the census that counts them. If they have separate addresses, that's the current practice. That was the practice for the 2020 census. We can't really predict what it'll be for 2030, but for 2020. A property that had separate addresses for its principal structure and its ADU would have been counted as two units. Whereas a property that had a single address was counted as one. And, and I, I will note that every census that I've had any involvement in since the nineteen eighties. Every ten years, they develop different rules for counting properties. It changes every ten years. So there's just really no way to know for sure how they will count them in 2030. I think we would have to assume. That they would count each ADU separately, and in fact, that was the assumption we made. Um, prior to the 2020 census, when we were trying to make sure that we stayed above ten percent on the SHI, we were counting. Accessory apartments as separate units. Um, but, but when the census came down. They were not all counted as separate units, only the ones with separate addresses were.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, that was the only question I have related to this article. Was there anything else from the board before I opened up to public comment on this article?
I did have. I had one comment on the definition of um accessory structure, if you can go back to that. So right now, um, let me see where it says. Self-contained housing unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking. And sanitation within a single-family dwelling or its accessory structure to, there to. That, I think that single-family dwelling needs to be changed to principal dwelling or um. Principal structure. Because this, this could apply in a two-family home, this could apply in a three-family home. It's not limited to a single-family home. So I think the term single-family should be changed to principal.
Plus the word, the word family, since there's no requirement of a familial relation anymore, is that correct? So the word, I know single-family is kind of a term of art saying it's a single structure. Um, yeah, but I, I think that works. But it get, good catch.
Thank you, Nora. I should ask, are there any other uh comments or suggestions from staff or the board before I open it up to public comment on this article? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands from the panelists, so at this time I will open up the floor to public. Comment, public participation on proposed PB article one. Please feel free to raise your hand if you would like to speak on this article. Or enter your comment or questions to the Q and A section. The two notes I'll reiterate. One, we need your full name and address for the record, and two, um, we would um. Like to keep comments to three minutes per person so that everybody get a chance to. So I'll give that a moment. I'm not seeing any hands, nor am I seeing anything in the Q and A at this time. Um, so I think we can move on to article two. If something comes back for article one, obviously we will take the comment. So Elijah, back to you.
Yes, uh, let me share my screen. Alright, so, uh. We have a proposed article, uh, PB two, affordable housing. Uh, the purpose and overview for this is that, um, it addresses current needs. Um, you know, residents are experiencing increased housing instability. Uh, there are increases in area median income, uh, which have led to unaffordable rents for what are considered. Quote-unquote affordable units. Uh, the aim is to prevent displacement homelessness and a reliance on assistance. Uh, and uh, to increase the options for income-restricted households. Um, for example, teachers, uh, public safety personnel, uh, seniors, young professionals, uh, single parents. And then also, uh, follow through on the goal to create more housing choice in the comprehensive plan. Uh, this is also to simplify and update language, uh, throughout the bylaw and to make it. Um. To change, you know, outdated references to, uh, the. Department formerly known as, uh, DHCD, which is now in the executive, uh, office of housing and livable communities, HLC. Uh, so how does that relate to the actual, um. Uh, bylaws that we do have, it would be, uh, amending section two, uh, and various sections throughout. Uh, currently affordable affordability requirements are at eighty percent. Uh, area median income, uh, the planning board will consider a mix of eighty, fifty and thirty percent AMI for affordable rental units. Uh, the affordable ownership units would still be set at eighty percent AMI. Uh, this doesn't change the percentage of units in a project. Uh, but will allow for greater affordability of the already set aside units. So. Uh, for an example, if you have a twenty-five unit building, uh, instead of the four units. That are already required as affordable being at eighty percent, those same four units would then be a mix of. Uh, you know, two at eighty percent, one at fifty percent and one at thirty percent. Um, just for those who are kind of more, uh, visual, uh, learners, I just, uh, kind of made a, a graphic. That kind of explains that we have a building that has twenty-five units. There are four that are, you know. Considered, uh, affordable at eighty percent AMI. Uh, what we're proposing is that. Those four units now be a greater mix of affordability. Um. In either case, there will still be twenty-one units at market rate. Uh, and then, yeah, that, uh, concludes the, uh. Overview for the proposed article two, and I can go to the draft language, uh, for the board.
Thank you. Um, and while Elijah's pulling up the draft language, I'll, I'll ask, are there any comments or questions from board members on proposed article two?
I have a couple that, uh, on the affordable rental units, but, uh, I think it's easier if we. See that section, just to talk about. The one, the, the, the way it's structured.
Good segue.
Yeah, could we go down to the affordable rental units, Elijah? And. I. I see how, so we are essentially. Putting in place. If it is, it, and, and the, the thing, if you go down a little bit further. Where it's the first, second, third, fourth, and then the, the final paragraph, where it goes, shall repeat. For every four required affordable rental units. Essentially, the structure is, if it is a multiple of. One and two, there's gonna be a eighty percent. Uh, multiples of. Seven will be, I mean, three, seven, and then et cetera, will be. Two eighty percent, one fifty percent, and then multiples of four, eight, et cetera, will be. Um. Two eighties, one, uh, fifty, and then a thirty. Um. So anyways, kind of cutting to the chase, the, the way this was worded just confused me. Um. I, I, I got it in the bullets and then below. I was gonna suggest a table. Um, to make it a little bit easier, because I think the table. On the minimum number of affordable dwelling units was visual and it looked very well. And I guess the real issue is where the last paragraph where it says. For developments where the required number of affordable dwelling units exceed four units, the above. Plu- pattern shall repeat for every four required affordable rental units. And that sentence is very kind of confusing, but I think. The idea is clear that we are trying to essentially say. If it's four units, you're gonna have two, one, one, five, and, and then et cetera, and the pattern will repeat. But I think we either should do a ta- we should do a table, we have to reword it, and I didn't rewrite the last paragraph, but, uh. I think that's, this, this was very confusing to me. As to how it was worded.
But I will just point out that there was a table in a prior version, and the problem with the table was that the numbers didn't add up. Um, when you went beyond a certain number of units. You could only have fifteen percent, and the board is only authorized to require a total of fifteen percent of the units be affordable. But the numbers of units that would be eighty percent added to the ones that would be fifty, adds the ones that would be, um, thirty percent added up. In many cases to more than fifteen percent, and so that was a problem. We kept at, ending up with one or two additional units. That the board wouldn't have authority to require, just the way the percentages worked out, because you always round out. Um, so what we could do is we have a table using these calculations up to a certain number, say up to the first. Hundred units, and then after that say that the table repeats. I think the, the greater question that you als- the. A question that the board should, uh, drill down on is the, um. The feasibility of the numbers that are chosen. So by having this pattern repeat for every four units. What you're doing is you're saying in most cases, fifty percent of the affordable units will be at eighty percent. Twenty-five percent of the affordable units will be at fifty percent and twenty-five will be at thirty percent. That's a significant change.
Well, that was, that was a, another issue that I was gonna raise, um, which is. The. And I guess, I, I, I total, I totally get the, um, on the housing and talking to a man about affordable housing all the time. Um, I get the objective and the desire and whatnot, but I'm concerned we're putting. A stake in the ground that's gonna be hardish to have people comply with, I guess. Open to suggestions. It's just, uh, this, this structure to me is, uh. Rigid and, uh, I don't know if it's gonna end up working. I was concerned about it.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. I, I, I had the same question, and I don't mean to jump in front of other people, but that, since we're on it. Is this economically feasible for, in general, for our projects and, and is this something that? Being that much of a shift, would that potentially jeopardize this moving forward at town meeting?
So if I could just note that we have a feasibility study that was recently conducted that showed that fifteen percent of. All of our, uh, multifamily units at eighty percent is feasible from an economic point of view. So we know. At eighty percent, it's feasible. Having a certain number of units at fifty percent and thirty percent. Is likely feasible as well. We don't have a study that shows that, but we have an example where we have the, um. Um, the Everett Street project that has one unit at fifty percent and one unit at thirty percent. So. Or, or it might be sixty percent and thirty percent.
Sixty.
Um, yeah, so we, so that's our only example. We don't have a feasibility study that shows that you could actually take. All the affordable units and only fifty percent of them are at eighty, another twenty-five at fifty and twenty-five at thirty. That seems like a bit of a stretch to me, so I understand the desire to get as many lower, um. AMI units as possible. But I think I, if, if this was something I was pursuing, I'd probably be more comfortable with a pattern of six rather than four. Uh, where maybe the first three units were at eighty percent, the next two were at fifty percent, and then the sixth one was at. Um. At thirty percent, but even that, without doing a study, I don't think we really know until an applicant comes in. So the other option might be to have language that allows up to that number, um, at the planning board's discretion.
Thank you. Kate.
The, I mean, we're, we're kind of. By the time someone's getting to a, a project of this scope, they're coming before the board anyway. And they, and, right, and we can, and things can be asked for at that time. If we wanna get more specific or, or, I mean, I'm inclined, I, I would like this thing to move forward. So I would, I would love for it to be, uh, as palatable as possible, so I, I'm, I like the idea of, of six. Uh, with the understanding that more discussions can happen on a case-by-case basis. I think that's where I'm going with this, if, um. If I hadn't said, uh, anything that undermines this process. Thanks.
Thank you. So.
I, I, I really, really welcome the sentiment. I'm concerned that we may not see an applicant. Simply because this is in place is, and we may not know of it. For someone to say, oh, can we waive this, or can we, you know, work with a special permit on that or, or whatever, the. And it is. I, 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 you know, I'm not an expert in, you know, construction costs or anything like that, but I just, it, it strikes me as of. May, you know, maybe six is, is more palatable. It's just, uh, this, this, this was. I, I just have a lot of concerns over this, this, the setup, and I, I think maybe we should seriously consider. Nora's suggestion of six or some other, you know, alternative.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm racking my brain. Yeah, I'm I'm racking my brain. Sean, thank you. Yes. You're on mute, Sean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question's a bit orthogonal to the kind of four versus six number. And it sounds like six has been given some thought, and there's a reasonable argument to be made for it. Mine's more in the operationalization of using a fifty percent AMI versus a sixty percent AMI. I'm, I've seen both out there in policy documents and in the wild. Um I also know that sixty percent was used on uh the Everett Street project, and I certainly seen sixty percent more commonly than I've seen fifty percent, but I might be looking at different documentation than others. I'm curious if from an operational standpoint, one or the other is easier, and likewise, is one or the other of those two numbers something that you know, even developers or those bringing projects are more familiar with and easier for them to wrap their heads around and do the calculations quickly? And that's, I'm looking at those with much more experience than I certainly have talking to developers about these types of levels.
So I think the um the consideration for fifty percent, uh well, first, yes, I've seen the both the mix of sixty and fifty. Uh but we had gone with fifty uh because uh, you know, the um HUD, you know, the federal um housing and urban development uh they set their income limits, and it's at eighty percent, fifty percent, and thirty percent, so it's easier to calculate from uh that uh standpoint.
Understood. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
So um staff, Nora, Elijah, should the board spend some time hashing out this language at this juncture? Cause I I'm a hundred percent in favor of doing something, and and I echo what Kate said about I I want to see this. I think we've all said we want to see this move forward. But I I want to make sure it's something that's actually workable. So I'm I'm happy to have that conversation and and come up with something that might actually be a bit more feasible. Um I think we all have good intentions, but yeah, I don't want to move something forward that isn't Nora.
So this is really your only opportunity to discuss this before you go for your first hearing before the FinCom. And so I do think this is something you need to drill down on and decide what level of of affordability you think is important, so uh or most in need, whether it's the sixty percent or the fifty percent, and then how many affordable units you feel should be at the standard rate, and how many less than that? Um I think if we look to the Everett Street prod- property, was there twenty four units overall, Elijah?
Twenty four affordable units.
So twenty two of the twenty four units were approved at eighty percent, and that was something that the developer was willing to go along with. For comparison, if that project was coming before you today and this bylaw was in place, and it and it, assuming it wasn't under the Mumford Zone, because the these calculations will not apply to Mumford. That's that's kind of a different animal. Um but assuming you had a developer was coming in, wanted to develop a hundred and sixty units, was required to have twenty four units of that hundred and sixty as affordable, with this calculation here, they would be making only twelve of those twenty four units at eighty percent. That's quite a difference than the twenty two at eighty percent that you approved under that project. So from a developer's point of view, um I think it makes it a lot less fiscally positive of a project, and so I agree, it could dampen the desire of a developer to bring in the multifamily housing that you're trying to encourage. So I kind of can see both sides of the story. So you want as much truly affordable housing as you can get, but if uh you set these numbers in a way that um requires too much of the affordable housing to be at too low an AMI, I think you you very well could be stifling the development.
Thank you. Kate?
Could we, just to throw out an idea, could we um have this in place? Change the number to eight, right? Have this in place for the first four. Then you get four at eighty percent. Then we s- then we started, which is maybe six, right? Maybe that is six actually in in practicality. But if you're only gonna have four, I I like this split. I wanna, I I do want to be hitting these tranches uh early. But maybe, but maybe uh I I take your point uh very well, and I do want um we're we're looking for housing choice in Westwood, right? Uh people ask for housing choice, so um Yeah, that's that's my initial uh thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Sean, I think I saw your hand up next, and then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be curious for staff's thoughts on other policy levers, if any, that we can include here that can either kick in or account for those cases where this might be moving a project into the untenable range. And I don't know if that's certain flexibilities or incentives or or something else, but I'm curious if there are other levers or mechanisms beyond the sort of hard requirement that can allow that flexibility and what what we might consider if any. And maybe there's a good reason not to include any of those flexibilities, but that's that's kind of one question I'm thinking about. Then I'll just second, make a comment to Kate's point. I I think I'm in agreement there that in in the interest of being reasonable and knowing what we know, something either six or eight is is a number that I'd be much more comfortable with. And I I I think that it also it helps smaller projects make sure that they're gonna still be able to stand while making sure we we get the kind of uh diversity and choice in 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 sort of the affordability levels in some of our larger projects. So I'm not sure I have an exact number I'm interested in yet, but I echo Kate's comments there. Thanks.
Thank you. Phil?
I I took a quick look and just a quick skim of Everett. I if we, and just following up on Nora's point. Um I I know in our discussions on Everett, and obviously that's a Mumford, and so it's a little bit different. Um I'm not sure that we would have ended up getting that project done if these were in place. In fact, I doubt it, cause it was at times there were, you know, there was a lot of give and take and pushback and whatnot, but if it had been squeezed with these, you know, parameters, I I seriously, and I, you know, I totally think you know, Everett is a substantial net positive. Um um I'm leaning more towards what Sean was just saying, you know, six to eight and perhaps eight as a test. And I think we we need to kind of put our, you know, part of our toes into the water and try without more, and we can always come back next year and, you know, make some further changes uh. But I don't think, cause we're, we're running the risk of, you know, what's what's the old phrase, you know, throwing the baby out with the bathwater, even though I I can't imagine anybody really doing babies in baths or whatever, but the, I think that uh I think six or eight or something is really the only way to approach this.
So um if I may, Madam Chair, in response to Phil's comment, um so there I just want to remind the board, so in that discussion um with the um previous hundred and sixty unit building, um I had initially proposed uh, you know, a mix of both uh a mix of eighty, sixty, and thirty, in which the applicant had pushed back mentioning that if there was thirty percent units, there may have, uh i- it would not make the project as economically viable. And so we, through the negotiating process, had settled for those six uh sixty percent AMI units. Yeah.
Um are any other questions or comments from board members?
I'll just say, I'll I'll just kind of throw it up there. Start with eight, and then let's revisit it next year and see how it unfolds over the next um, you know, this this calendar year going into next year.
Thank you. Kate?
So I I I'm inclined to agree with with Phil, and um and I'm just curious, is there a way to somehow gauge projects that we don't see as a result of this? Um that would be uh most fruitful to move forward after this year.
That's a great question.
So yes, I I think that would be um, you know, the town engaging in a feasibility study and looking at, you know, greater affordability, um specifically with those that range being at fifty and thirty or um something else.
Thank you. Yeah, I I'm inclined, I I I agree. I think I share the thoughts and concerns and wishes of everybody who's already spoken. I'm struggling with the conundrum here of of wanting to have some sort of requirement, but also allow the board enough discretion to be able to work with it. So I, and I'm just not sure how to achieve that. But I would support the the pattern of of eight, at least to to start. And if there's a way to bake in some flexibility for the board, yes, thank you, Nora.
So at the risk of making this even more confusing, I'm gonna make a a different suggestion. So Kate had mentioned that she's most interested in seeing the um fifty percent and thirty percent units coming in at the beginning. So she suggested the first and second units at eighty percent, the third at fifty percent, the fourth at thirty percent, and then go back to um eighty percent for the next units. Well, what if you do it on a a basis of ten? Um so the first and second units are at eighty percent. The third is at fifty, the fourth is at thirty, then the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth are all back to eighty percent. And then for the eleventh unit, we start over again. And to give you an idea of what that would mean, if you had a fifty unit development that required eight affordable units, six of the units would be at eighty percent under that calculation, one would be at fifty, one would be at thirty. If you had a greater number of units, it would, the more units you have, the closer it would come to being eighty percent eighty, ten percent fifty, and ten percent thirty. Um but this, so the smaller projects would absolutely get in a mix of the the lower AMI units, but the overall project would still be dominant with eighty percent units. What I would also suggest then is that you consider adding language or such other arrangement as um determined suitable by the planning board.
To give some, I'd like that idea. I think that's a, I think that that's a possible al- alternative. I like that. Very good, good suggestion.
Yeah, I'd support that, and and just what you outlined there feels like off the top of my head, kind of in line with what we heard from the developer at Everett Street about what does and doesn't work. And I know that's just one example, but that's really the best one we have, um that economically what you're proposing hopefully would work. So we, it would be a win-win. The developer wouldn't shy away, and it would actually result in some more diverse affordability options.
It would still have more um fifty percent and thirty percent, more lower AMI units than that development would have, but it wouldn't be such a high percentage of the overall affordable units.
And it avoids the chilling effect of having you know, some developers saying, it just is not gonna be economic for me to build in Westwood anymore. I like that. I I I'll go with that.
Yeah, how how do other board members feel about that? And I like the, you know, adding the language that allows the board to negotiate another arrangement as well. I think that that covers what I was hoping to get in there.
Yeah, I like it very much. Thanks, Nora, for that.
Uh so it was uh first and second at eighty percent, third at fifty percent, fourth at thirty percent, and the five through ten at eighty percent?
Yes.
Okay. So that's of the board, do we have that as kind of a consensus?
That's the vibe I get um are are the board members.
I'm good with it.
Sounds like we're in consensus on that. Great. Um and then we'll, I'll, I'm happy to leave it to uh Nora and Elijah to work out the language i- in a way that uh is compliant with the way our bylaws is supposed to be written, and we can uh look at it next time. Um excellent. Any other comments from board members or staff before I open up the comment on proposed article two? All right, I'm not seeing any hands. So at this time, I will open up uh the floor to public comments or questions on proposed planning board article two, as we just discussed. If you'd like to uh make a comment or ask a question, please raise your hand or enter it into the Q and A section of Zoom application. Just a reminder, we will need your full name and address for the record, and we will be uh limiting comments to three minutes per speaker or writer, I guess. So I'll give that a moment. I'm not seeing any hands go up. Uh there is something in the Q and A. I can go ahead and read, but do you want to read it, Elijah, or should I? Doesn't matter.
Uh you can go for it.
Okay, I know you were busy doing other things. Um Robert Gotti, fifty five Rock Meadow Road. I don't have a question, just a comment of thanks for the thoughtful discussion to hash out these affordability guidelines in a way that considers developers, that does not chill any development. Thank you, Rob. Right. I'll give it another moment, see if there's any other comments or hands raised. I am not seeing anything at this time, so um Elijah, happy to move on to proposed article three.
All right. Screen and move on to article three. All right, so this is looking at the proposed rezoning for uh two sixteen to three ten Providence Highway. Uh this is um the Lambert's Plaza. Uh it is currently uh zoned as single residence B, and the proposal uh made by the uh property owner, which the board had um it was uh accepting of was to change it to highway business. Um this is, this parcel is a pre-existing non-conformity. Uh what that means is the use there uh is not uh does not conform with the uh zoning, however, i- it's allowed because it was uh pre-existing. Uh the in changing the to highway business, it would align the parcel with what its current uh use is, which is a commercial uh entity. And so uh it could help to encourage uh physical improvements to the property. Um you know, in increase the um design uh but and also allow for investments in the property, allow for um a wider range of uh tenants uh that uh you know, may be accepting uh to the community uh for that specific site as it is uh on Providence Highway, and um you know, there are uh many examples along Providence Highway of um you know, commercial um entities that um take full advantage and are a benefit to the area. Um and yeah, that is is the overview for that.
Thank you. Uh any questions, comments from board members? I'm not seeing anything. Any any other comments or input from staff? Not seeing anything. I guess my, my one or two comments on this article would be, to me, it makes sense. As far as I know, that site has always had commercial property on it. It's never been used for residential properties. And the current zoning makes it cumbersome for whoever owns the parcel to bring tenants in. And from what we heard at previous meetings, there have actually been potential tenants who have chosen not to pursue tenancy because it takes too long to get through the process of working with an existing non-conformity. So I, I actually think it's a really good idea to make this change and, and I'm supportive.
It also did.
You're on mute, Phil. We lost you there.
All right. I was just going to add, there was, it, it's a negative impact on upgrades, exterior improvements, all those other kinds of things that are necessary and beneficial to the town. So I'm, I'm for it.
Thank you. Yeah. Any other comments or, or input from board members or staff? Sean, yes.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'll reiterate what I've said in the other meetings where we've discussed this potential warrant article. I think that this makes a lot of sense. I agree, Phil, with what you've said. I, I have an interest in seeing the exterior of that property improved. And this will, I think, bring it before the planning board in a way that, that gives us some more discretion over those things and hopefully helps us get better outcomes for the town on that parcel over time. I'm, I'm, I'll be glad to see this go forward and we'll be at the town meeting as well.
Thank you. Kate?
Yeah, a silly question. Are there any residences there?
No, it is a completely commercial, used as a commercial site.
Yeah. So I'm like, there's no, right? So, so to me, this feels very like administrative, like, let's just make it what it is. So there's, there's lots of benefits to, to straightening this out, but, but we'll just make it what it is, is my feeling about it. Thank you.
I think in the past, the abutters were very concerned, but it's, I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's just conforming to the physical reality. And so that's the whole point of this. So should, it has zero impact on the abutters because, and it actually will benefit the abutters.
Yeah, understood.
And if I may add to that point, so the ownership of the site did change hands. And so the new ownership is more amenable to making, you know, certain maintenance, I guess, rectifying maintenance issues that were found in the past.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions, comments, input from staff or board members before I open it up to public comment on proposed article? Are we on four?
This is article three.
Three. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of everything. All right. I'm not seeing anything from board members or staff. So at this time, I'd open up the floor to public comment on proposed article three. If anyone would like to comment, please raise your hand or enter your question or comment in the Q and A section, full name and address, please, and three minutes per speaker. I'll give it a moment on that. I'm not seeing any hands. So far, I'm not seeing anything in the Q and A.
We have.
I do see a hand went up. All right. If we could permit Bob Folsom to speak, welcome.
Hi, I'm Bob Folsom, thirty-five Smith Drive. I am one of those abutters who does have a little bit of a problem with the, the property there. We are behind Lambert's Plaza, so on Smith Drive. We've had problems in the past, both with noise problems, primarily Lambert's. But, you know, some of the other tenants have dumpsters there too, and they would start in the middle of night and empty that. It took a lot of involvement with the police to be able to get those issues rectified. And we've been fortunate that recent past, that hasn't been a problem. But there are also the issues of the height of the property for future development. There is a little strip of wetlands between our property and Lambert's Plaza. That is getting, is getting encroached on a little bit. And the wetlands is backing up because of things being thrown back in the woods there. So that's the, the problem with the abutters on the backside and why we have had to oppose this previous times and may not be overly supportive of it going forward.
Thank you. I do see, it looks like the property owner and, and property owner's attorney have their hands raised. I think it might be helpful to bring them in to help address some of the concerns, if that's all right. Yeah, thank you.
So I've allowed both to speak, just state your name and address, please.
This is Justin Ferris. I represent the owner of the parcel. Do you need my home address?
The parcel that you represent?
Oh, three ten Providence Highway, the Lambert's Plaza. I thank Bob for bringing his concerns to the board this evening. We've actually had a couple of meetings with direct abutters. A few times with Peter Haney, who lives on East Street. He's the closest abutter. And actually, last night, we had a virtual meeting with three bu- abutters, two of which lived on Smith Drive. I apologize if Bob did not get the flyer on that. They brought similar concern for the past ownership issues where Lambert's is so focused on their business, they weren't really in a great position to do their duty as a landlord and as a neighbor. And we've taken those concerns seriously. Anytime someone's brought them to our attention, we immediately address them within twenty-four hours with notices to tenants, reminding them of their obligation to abide by town bylaws. And we've had very positive feedback so far in addressing those issues. And I can assure Bob will continue to do so. And I'm happy to share my contact info directly, my direct line on my cell phone. If there's any issues at any time, we're happy to jump right on them.
Thank you. I, I get, I didn't know if Attorney Bailey wanted to speak. I know he had had his hand up, maybe just to be brought in. Dan, did, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Not really. I, I think Justin addressed it. The only thing that I think I, I would have to say is, you know, any, you know, almost any type of work that would be done at this property to upgrade the facade, to address parking and traffic and traffic flow type issues, the planning board will have jurisdiction over that work as part of site plan review. And as would the Conservation Commission for any work within a hundred feet of a wetland area. You know, I am not familiar with the storm drainage system at this site, but I anticipate that it would probably built when the site was built sixty years ago, and it almost certainly is not anywhere near what would be expected today. You know, in terms of, you know, treatment and the, the usual types of collection and, you know, stormwater treatment, et cetera. And, you know, any redevelopment would, any significant redevelopment would require that the site be brought up to current stormwater and other health and safety standards.
Thank you. I do see another hand raised, Elijah?
Yes. Please state your name and address. Ma'am, you're on mute.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I'm Deborah Deegan, twenty-five Smith Drive. I live next door to Robert Folsom. And I echo the same concerns that Bob has. I've been in this house for over fifty years. Lambert's has been an ongoing problem. Noise, the culvert not being cleaned out. I, I believe Lambert's is responsible for cleaning out that culvert. Our backyards are destroyed with water, with the, with the rains that we had last year. I can't even mow until eighth August. I cannot go in the back of my yard and mow. It's now all eroded. It's, it's just a mess. It's a heartbreak.
Thank you for your comments. And I, I, I hope that the words that Mr. Ferris shared earlier were helpful as far as addressing some of those concerns.
Also, not to interrupt, but also the lighting. It's been referred to as the mothership has landed in our backyards.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I, I did also want to reiterate that, you know, in looking to rezone this property, this would then, you know, open up the ability for those type of site improvements for any type of substantial upgrades of the site. It would include the stormwater management to reduce runoff. You know, like we would look at lighting for making sure that the, you know, project had a photometric plan and had dark sky lighting to ensure that there isn't, you know, that excessive foot candle count that, that kind of goes into the abutting properties.
Thank you. I saw all my colleagues' hands go up, but I'm not sure who was first. I think Phil.
Yeah, I, ma'am, I, I absolutely hear your concerns. I think that this, if, if you've seen any of our meetings, this planning board is, I think, pretty well attuned to the concerns of abutters and residents. And the current zoning actually has not been helping you because there have been obstacles to it being improved, exterior improvements, lighting improvements, stormwater and everything else. And since the, the existing non-conforming zoning has not worked, I suggest that that this is going to be a positive for both you and Mr. Folsom, for the simple reason that we as a board take it very seriously, you know, the, the lighting, the screening, all sorts of issues that come to us every single meeting. And I think you have a very committed group on this board. So I, I just wanted to give you that this is actually in your benefit from my perspective. I don't live there, but the existent, the existing incorrect zoning is not helpful. And I think you have a good, it sounds like you have a pretty good new landlord that's going to work. So that's, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. I, I'm not sure if Sean or Kate had their hand up next.
I think I'm first.
Okay. And Kate's pointing at you as well, Sean.
I, you know, I just wanted, thanks, Madam Chair. I, I wanted to thank Bob and Debbie. Thank you both for coming and bringing your concerns and comments tonight. It's really helpful for us to hear from abutters because that's oftentimes the only way that we hear about, whether it's issues or concerns about noise, lighting, kind of buffer spaces, turns about heights of buildings, things like that. So that's very, very helpful information to us. I wanted to echo what, what my colleague Phil just shared and what Elijah, our town planner, shared. I think one of the reasons I'm really interested in this article is because it's going to bring more of the process for anything that happens to this property under the planning board's purview. Currently, because it's a non-conforming lot, my understanding is that the property kind of has a non-conforming use. It's a commercial use on a residential property. So it goes to the zoning board of appeals to get a variation or, I don't know if it's a variance or, or just some sort of a special permit to have a different use other than what it's zoned for. By having it kind of under our purview as a highway business property, it means that any project on this property will go through environmental impact and design review. And we've learned a lot over the course of fifty years. We've built our zoning bylaw up. We have much more in our zoning bylaw now about lighting. So lighting has to be not intrusive. It has to not have a glare. It has to be, Elijah used the term dark sky compliant, which means lights need to point down instead of kind of out glaring into your house. I think we've got kind of stricter rules now around noise. We can do a lot as a board around landscaping, and that's something this collection of board members has been very interested in to make sure kind of commercial uses and industrial uses have a little more screening from some of what you're experiencing as a butters. So those are all, and that's, that's only a subset of the things that we can consider as part of the EIDR process. So I just want you to know that it's something we're thinking about. And we're actually hoping that through this article, we can hopefully even address some of those concerns. And back to what Mr. Bailey discussed, the stormwater as well. Our stormwater regulations and, and requirements have come a long, long way since that, that area and the plaza was initially developed. And if anything comes forward going forward, we can do a lot to correct on the stormwater front if this is coming under the planning board's purview. And if this gets rezoned to highway business, the stormwater will be a whole different situation. I hope we can significantly improve it. Those are my comments, kind of lengthy. Thanks for tolerating. But Bob and Deborah appreciate you coming and sharing your views.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Kate?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And also thank you to the abutters and to the new owner for, for being here to be able to speak to this. I, I do just want to say what we're talking about is just a zoning change. We're not talking about any work being done to the site at all yet. And and, and some folks are unmuted. They may or may not know. And so, so moving forward, starting from a place where the thing is called what it is, is very helpful. If you start from a complicated point and try to make an improvement, that's really difficult. But if you start from a straightforward place, this is how it's being used and this is, and has been for decades. And so we're going to call it this thing that it's being used as. It's just a much more straightforward process. If we were in the opposite situation and it, it wanted to change to residential, we might, we would have some real problems with that. But it's residential and it wants to be, we're, we're trying to change it to what it is, which is a highway business. So I'm not trying to be glib about your issues as a butters. I'm just saying for me, it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. And it aligns with, with the use and smooth processing going forward. So, thank you.
Understood. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate. And my colleagues have really articulated all of that so clearly. I won't reiterate anything they've said, aside from, I do appreciate the abutters and the property owners and their representatives being here to discuss this. And I, I absolutely understand your concerns, but I, I agree that I, from my perspective, this actually provides more oversight and can help alleviate some of the issues that that neighborhood has been experiencing for a very long time. So I, I hope this discussion has been helpful for you folks in the neighborhood that are here tonight. And again, thank you for coming. Any other questions or discussion from anyone around this particular proposed article? Mr. Ferris, I see your hands still up. Was there something else you wanted to add, or is that just from before?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that it was still up, but I hear Debbie and Bob's concerns and whatever we can address on our property will certainly work to do that. And we look forward to working with the town in the future and really improving this property. So thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who engaged in that discussion. If there's no further discussion around proposed article three, and I'm not seeing anything in the Q and A, nor am I seeing any other hands up, happy, Elijah, to move on to proposed article four. You're muted, Elijah. Sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, I will move on to the next part of the presentation. Let's see. Share my screen. Share my screen. Just one second. So the next part of this is the proposed Article Four. As it relates to the Mumford Overlay District. And so this is essentially a placeholder. So the. This is amendments only if needed. It's reserved in the event that Westwood does not receive a determination of district compliance from HLC. And is required to make adjustments to the text of the zoning bylaw or the zoning map. The recent Supreme Court. Decision does not, a Massachusetts Supreme Court decision does not change the applicability of the MBTA's. Community law to Westwood. As an update on January twenty seventh, HLC did. Reconfirm Westwood's interim compliance based on the aforementioned court ruling. Which one part of it did mandate that HLC readvertise the regulations. As state law mandates and so this is real, HLC really just said. You were in interim compliance before. You are in interim compliance right now. They are still, you know, reviewing it. To date, there haven't been any issues found in our submission and we are still. Awaiting their official determination.
All right. Thank you. So we have no no language to discuss because this truly is a placeholder. If we were to find ourselves in a position where we had to do something, correct?
That is correct.
All right, excellent. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? I'm not seeing any any other further questions or or comments input from staff before I open it up to public comment. All right, I'll open up the floor to public comment on proposed Article Four. Anyone would like to comment or ask a question, please raise your hand or enter it in the Q and A. We will need your full name and address and we're trying to keep it to three minutes per speaker and I'll give that a minute. I'm not seeing any hands raised nor am I seeing anything in the Q and A. Just double checking. All right, then I would move on to proposed Article Five.
Yes. All right, so we have the FMUOD Overlay District, ARO District. As it relates to East Street. The consideration is to add flexible multiple use overlay District Five, FMUOD Five. Overlay to one thirty-one East Street and amend FMUOD Five uses to allow. Hotel use with the planning board's special permit. Or amend the current Administrative Research Office District ARO. To allow hotel use with a zoning board of appeals special permit. Although the property is not currently listed for sale, a number of prospective buyers have inquired about potential redevelopment. For uses permitted within the ARO District. Proposed options will be considered to increase the potential for beneficial commercial use of the vacant Meditech. Property at one thirty-one East Street in a manner that is compatible with surrounding uses and supportive. Of what Westwood's split tax rate. As we had mentioned prior in prior meetings, the, you know, this property. If it were to fall into the residential use would. Really damage Westwood's split tax rate and maintaining a commercial property on that site is. Is a of importance.
Thank you. That was all you had at this time? I don't want to cut you off.
That is correct.
Okay. I'll open it up to board member questions. I see Kate's hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just. Wanted to say a little tongue in cheek. This is, this is the planning part of the planning department. Where you're really looking ahead to something that like. Is way, you know, not something that's currently on the table, but planning for. Possible thing that could happen and just being ready for it. I was trying to describe it to a resident recently. And they had a lot of questions about why now, why this? And I just said, oh, because they're planning. You know, they're looking and they're seeing where to to Elijah's point about the tax rate, where we could be vulnerable and where there's an opportunity. To preserve what what we have working for us that's advantageous. So I I just thank you for for being so forward looking and paying attention to these things, especially as as those, it's not even on the market. So so I just appreciate it and I support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate. Sean.
I. Have two questions and and the first is directed towards. Staff, which is. If we're if we're concerned about. A residential use, in this case, I'm thinking of. You know, some kind of. Foster use like maybe a retirement community or something along those lines. If we're concerned about some kind of use like that. Diluting our tax base versus a commercial use that might be more supportive of the town while we have. You know, certainly have a number of. I think budget issues that we're always thinking about and and new commercial growth supports that. If we're concerned about that. What? Even with this potential warrant article and bylaw change, what residential uses would still be allowed on this site? Whether by right or by some kind of appeal.
So I can answer that. The. The the site is in the ARO District, Administrative Research Office District. And that allows a residential requirement community by special permit issued by the zoning board of appeals. But it also allows an assisted care facility or a nursing home, both of which are considered residential uses. And either of those uses are allowed by right and there's nothing in the. There's nothing in the zoning bylaw that limits the number of units that would be in either an assisted living facility or a nursing home. It would be based on the setbacks, height requirement and then. Whatever the zoning board would consider appropriate.
So that, not to jump in, but this is kind of, this is something that's been on my mind as well along those lines. I understand trying to incentivize another commercial use, but I guess how do we, if we're. Do we need to do something? Parallel to try and. If we're really worried about losing this as a commercial property, is there something, an additional piece that we should be thinking about? Like maybe removing some uses as opposed to just trying to incentivize other uses.
So you could. Have to check the advertisement to see exactly how it's worded, but there's a potential. Opportunity to change the ARO uses to either eliminate or diminish. Those residential uses that are that are strictly allowed in the ARO. So residential retirement community, I think, goes a little bit beyond that. It's a separate section of our bylaw and I'm sure it's not advertised in a way that you could address that. But we do say that you can make changes to the ARO District, amendments to the ARO District. And so you could make amendments that lessen the ability for assisted living or nursing home uses. In the ARO District. But just keep in mind that doing so limits the two ARO districts in Westwood, not just one. So whether whether you're adding a hotel use or taking away some of the existing uses or lessening the. Maybe putting caps on the number of units that or the the number of units per acre or something along those lines. You would be affecting both districts. So you'd want to look at it very carefully. In the other district, the, so we have the one ARO District at East Street that has that single property owned by Meditech. The other ARO District has a number of discrete properties. It has Fox Hill Village. And Fox Hill Village itself is divided into a couple of different uses and then it has. Another Meditech building there, an office building at one hundred and two hundred Lauterbrook and then it also has one hundred High Street, which is a. Kind of a mixed medical office building. So just to. Keep in mind what the existing development is.
That was the other half of my question because I obviously ARO is one and I know, and again, this may be. Something we can't do with what's advertised, but I think it was when we were discussing Mumford, there had been some consideration to potentially. Decoupling those two AROs and having ARO one, ARO two. And again, I'm just thinking ahead that. I think that's a legitimate concern that I would share about losing the fifteen acres at Meditech. As a commercial. I'm just trying to figure out ways to to really ensure that we don't. So that's why this came into my head, but I. I understand that we wouldn't necessarily want to apply some of the things that we were just talking about to both ARO Districts. So I I'm just trying to come up with ideas. And my other question, since we're looking at overlays. And again, I'm sorry to jump in front of other board members, but I'm not seeing any other hands up. We're talking about FMUOD Five. Could you remind me where that's currently applied to?
Yes, that. That district of is applied on the other side of. One twenty-eight. So on properties, yes, those ones that you see with those little dots on it, square dots. The pinkish ones with the, looks like a blue. Blue square dot that's on it, that's ARO. I'm sorry, that's FMUOD Five.
So if we, if we were to apply, sorry, go ahead.
That that's the the closest FMUOD District to this area.
Okay, and just just to be clear for for me and probably for everybody. If we allow the hotel use in FMUOD Five, it would apply to all those properties. It wouldn't just be to the Meditech. Okay.
That's right.
Excellent. Thank you. Those were the only things that I had on this, just for clarity. Again, I'm sorry if I jumped in front of my colleagues. So if anybody else had questions or comments on this one. Kate, yes.
Thank you. So. So Ellen, if we could do more next year. Or is it too late this year to make the changes you're suggesting? And if we could do more next year, does that mean you don't want to do anything this year?
Those are good questions. It sounds like because there's a few pieces in play that. From my perspective and someone from staff can correct me if I'm wrong, simply prohibiting certain uses or removing allowed uses. We wouldn't want to do that in the ARO, full stop. It would be more for this particular part of the ARO. So it sounds like that would be to try and decouple the two ARO. Areas that we have would be beyond the scope of what we've advertised. So we wouldn't do that right now. As far as doing something at this point, I think it's two separate paths because to me it's like there's a path of incentivizing something. As opposed to, for lack of a way, better way to put it, shoring up the area. That we want to keep within. The commercial tax break, tax base. So I don't necessarily see them as either or, if that makes sense. I think it might be yes and, as far as whether or not that means I wouldn't want to do anything this year. I don't. I don't know that that. Is the case. Unless someone tells me it makes sense to do one thing before we do the other. I'm not sure. I'm I I'm I'm open to that conversation. Good question. Phil, yes.
I don't see it as an, i- if it's an either or, I don't see it as an either or. But. Second, I think it's one then another, I think is a better way of putting it. And so at least from my perspective, especially. Given the lateness in the process, we're in February and, you know, we have. You know, I guess it is an opportunity at this point of the upcoming town meeting. I would say, you know, take one step and then look at step two and how we should evaluate the next step. As compared to either or. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, I I don't, I don't see that there, to me, there's separate paths. It's two separate. Ways of approaching that property. So I I tend to agree. I saw Sean, but I saw Nora. So I think I'll go to Nora and then Sean, if that's all right, Sean.
Yep.
He's nodding.
I just wanted to confirm the way that this article was advertised. You are free to change uses within the ARO, permitted uses or special permit uses. You can make any amendments to them that you think are appropriate. And you can do the same within the FMUOD Five. But that's it. You 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 would not have the ability to change the zoning, the underlying zoning designation of either parcel. So 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 for instance, changing one thirty-one East Street to ARO Two, creating an ARO Two. And changing that would not be under this article, but changing uses in the ARO. Either adding additional uses, as I've suggested, a hotel or taking away uses or limiting those uses such as. Assisted living or nursing home to a maximum number of units. That's something that you would be able to consider under this. It would apply equally to both ARO districts, but I'm not. I'm not sure that the two ARO districts are significantly different. I would just caution you to consider what's at each location. So one location on East Street has an office building. And the location on off of High Street has an office building, a residential retirement community and then a small medical clinic. Or medical facility.
Thank you for clarifying that. Sean, yes.
That leads, thank you, Madam Chair, that leads nicely into my point. I personally, I would be inclined to do something this year, simply because I I don't know what type of. Activity or nonactivity we'd see on the property over the course of a year, but if something were to happen, I wouldn't want us. Kicking ourselves a year down the line and saying, oh, we should have. You know, if if we didn't want to see a residential use there, we we should have tried to do something earlier. And it sounds like we've got at least some flexibility in the way that this warrant article was advertised. That. I'm not sure I have an opinion on the exact mechanism yet, whether it's. Changing the uses in the ARO District or doing something on kind of the FMUOD Overlay. Perhaps we can do some kind of a grandfather clause in the ARO District. I don't even know if that's allowed, but something that would. You know, maintain some flexibility for Fox Hill Village or uses already in the ARO that are. You know, kind of grandfathered into a to a residential use, but that might set a different standard going forward. I don't know which mechanisms are all permissible, but I'd be inclined to do something here that. And it keeps us squarely in the Administrative Research Office or. Hotel slash connect commercial direction, if that's something we want to do. I'm opening a conversation here. I'm open to other perspectives as well, but to me, that makes sense to tackle now. While we've got this warrant article on the table in front of us. That's my thought.
Thank you. Any other opinions or comments from board members? It sounds like we have some work to do, but. Because again, Nora, you said this is really our only chance to hash out language before our first appearance before the Finance Commission, right?
That's correct.
All right, so I think before I move on to public comment, I I'd like to hear from board members about how. We collectively would like to approach that to be most effective. Kate.
So, so I'm curious, what, I, I appreciate limiting the size if it were going to be, I think that's the, the way to go even now, right? As Sean was just saying, I think that if we can do something now, we should. I just wonder what, what is the unit number we would be talking about? Is it, is it fifty, is it forty, what is it?
I thought I saw Nora about this, or Elijah.
So I can tell you one use that's allowed in the ARO, so in both the East Street property and the High Street area property, one use that's allowed is a residential retirement community. And that has a limitation already associated with it, that you can have a residential retirement community with up to five units per acre of independent living facilities or assisted living. And then up to one point five nursing beds per acre, one or the other and not both. So that, that's already strictly limited, and that's the section of our bylaw that Fox Hill Village was developed under. So Fox Hill Village has a special permit issued by the ZBA as a residential retirement community. And that's not a section of the bylaw that we're looking to amend. Uh, that's not something that, that we've advertised to amend. The other uses are very specific, nursing home and assisted living facility. And looking at the bylaw now, both of those uses, just open up, are simply allowed by special permit by the ZBA in the ARO. They're not allowed anywhere else, so I don't think you'd want to eliminate the uses. I think you just want to either put a similar units per acre restriction or beds per acre, in the case of a nursing home restriction on those two uses, like you have for residential retirement community. Or you would want to add some criteria for the ZBA to consider in deciding whether or not it wants to address those, allow those uses. I think the simplest way to do it would be to limit the number of units per acre because that gives you a very specific outcome that you could rely on. So for instance, this property is just over fifteen acres. And if it's developed as a residential retirement community, I believe that would allow about seventy-five, seventy-six units of independent or assisted living. Or, what's one and a half times fifteen, the twenty-two units, it's twenty-two beds in a nursing home. That clearly would not be a feasible use, no one would build a nursing home that could only have twenty-two beds. Whether or not someone would think seventy-five, seventy-six units of assisted or independent living would be worth doing on fifteen acres, I don't know. So if you look at the part, the other ARO zone off of High Street, that's a much larger property. The Fox Hill Village, I believe owns over eighty-five acres, and that's how they can have as many units as they have. So, so maybe the number isn't one unit per five acres, maybe it's one unit per ten acres. I'm not sure, that's something I think that the board should think about, what they'd like to see there. My preference would be that no residential use of any kind go on this property. It's currently a commercial use. It benefits the town from a fiscal perspective as a continued commercial use. Most of the use is allowed in ARO and most of the use is allowed by FMUOD D five are all of the uses allowed by FMUOD five are commercial uses. So I would encourage the planning board to do everything it can to prioritize the continued commercial use of this property over any residential use.
If I may add to Nora's comments, not only that, but you know, the, adding the, the hotel use with this site in proximity to the highway, I think is an added incentive. You know, not only for the site, if it were in the ARO, you know, the other site that's off of one twenty-eight. I, I think, you know, the, keeping that commercial tax base as a hotel also adds, you know, meals tax. Uh, it just, there are multiple layers of benefits to, to this change.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, you raised, I see two other hands raised, but just to, you raised an interesting point, and that's what just popped into my head, is that the other location would actually probably be very desirable for a business like that too. And there are two buildings there that aren't part of Fox Hill Village, so that is something to consider as well. Sean, I'm not sure if you're, Phil had your hand up first. Thank you, Phil. Phil, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I'm just gonna echo, I don't know that we are trying to bite off more than we can chew at this point, just for tonight. I think we should keep, obviously, it's important to maintain the commercial, you know, tax base. The particular other issues with respect to, you know, Fox Hill and everything else, I think is certainly something to discuss perhaps for the future. But I think what we're trying to do is we have this particular parcel and avoid losing that commercial tax benefit, which would put pressure, more pressure on the residents. I think, I, I, I think we should kind of narrow our scope of what we're trying to do as compared to trying to take too much on and put this for, you know, I guess, what I would say is round two.
Thank you. Sean?
Maybe it helps me get some clarification from you there, Phil, which is, are, are you advocating that we don't try to do anything to restrict a residential use in this pass? So you're on this particular parcel?
I am open to that in simplified form, I guess. I guess I look at it a little that in some respects, and perhaps I'm, I'm taking more of a, you know, a speculation as compared to, you know, an estimate that it is more likely than not, given the proximity, that it's to the highway and everything else as compared to residential, that it's going to be maintained commercial. But I'm not a wizard and I can't see the future. So I'm not adverse to it, but I'm just, I guess I'm, I'm concerned that we're trying to do more than what we feasibly should be trying to do in where we're at, we are kind of, you know, we're kind of long in the process to be at this point.
Oh, sorry, Kate, I don't mean to cut, that there, perhaps I should clarify. The reason that this thought entered my mind in the first place is because, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but at our last meeting, what I thought I heard was the developers or people who are interested in purchasing the property had expressed interest in doing some sort of residential, you know, senior housing, which is why I said, oh, to myself, self, I appreciate incentivizing, which is a great, but if, if the people who are interested have already expressed interest in doing a particular type of development that could take the property out of the commercial tax base, is the incentive of adding another option enough to prevent that? And that's kind of why I started thinking the way that I was.
So, so it's, certainly we are creating an incentive. The question is, do we, are we trying to create a disincentive for the residential side? And I would suggest that is useful if narrowly drawn in. I kind of go with the KISS theory, keep it simple.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you. Kate, yes, thank you for your patience too.
Of course, so I, I kind of saw Nora nod a little bit. And forgive me if this has been stated, but the rumblings that you may have heard about people possibly being interested, should this ever come forward for sale, has been for a residential use thus far?
Ye- yes, because that's what's permitted by special permit in these districts. So it would be specifically for a residential retirement community or assisted living facility or nursing home or a combination of the three.
Okay, thank you for that. So, so, so here's what I would propose. Thank you, thank you so much for that. Here's what I propose tonight. So number one, adding hotel use. Number two, if we were to make any change to residential uses, that we would mirror what is already in place that we, that we heard described as far as number of, of beds per acre. And my reason for that is, I, I don't think we need to get that done tonight. But my reason for that is, you know, this is when mistakes get made, when you try to just cram that one last thing in that you're trying to get done. And I don't want us to create an unforeseen problem because we're, we're intending to really hit this very well on more than, in more than one way. So, so my thought is either keep it clean and just do what we came here to do, which is add hotel use. Or if we're gonna do anything more than that, mirror something that's already in place and don't try to get, get too cute about it, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you. I guess my question for you, Nora, is from your perspective, adding the incentive, would that be enough to deter the other desire to build one of the things you listed?
So I, I don't think, I think it's all up to the property owner, who they choose to sell to, if they choose to sell. So right now, the property is not publicly listed for sale. However, the number of people who have inquired about it leads me to believe that it's being privately, quietly shopped around. It's, if it was one, one entity that was talking to us about what they'd like to do there, I would think it was that entity going out and searching for properties that meet their size. But because it's more than one, that leads me to believe that someone is suggesting that this property is available or may be available in the future. So I have not heard from the property owner that that's the case, but because I have had three inquiries, all of them looking at assisted living or, or some type of retirement community. I think that someone is talking about that. So what I would want to do is to incentivize not just the potential developer, but the, the current owner to look at selling the property for a commercial use that is fiscally beneficial to the town and appropriate to the area of the town where it is, to the neighborhood between the highway and residential areas off of a busy crosstown street. So I would want to encourage a use, I think a hotel would be a use that, that would be very beneficial at this location and would not have significant negative effects on the neighborhood. In fact, I think that a, a, an office use would have greater negative effects on this property than a hotel would. And that's a, that's a permitted use, that's a use by right, and there's nothing we're likely to do to take that away. I do think what you could do is, in addition to adding the hotel into the use chart as a, a special permit use at this location. So not a use that's allowed by right, but a use that you would, the, and anyone who wanted to do that would still have to go to the ZBA for a special permit, I think that's one option. And I think the other option is just modifying the sections of the principal use table that have the uses of assisted living and nursing home, both of which are allowed by special permit, by, issued by the ZBA only in the ARO districts. I think all you'd have to do is add to that is some qualifying language in that principal use chart. So for instance, right now, it simply says nursing or convalescent home. I would say nursing or convalescent home on ten acres or more with a maximum of either one and a half or two beds per acre. And then for assisted living, it just says assisted living residence, I would add to that on ta- ten acres or more with a maximum of five units per acre. So that kind of reflects the numbers that are already in the residential retirement community, and it gives a minimum size so that a parcel like this, that's fifteen acres, couldn't be broken up into multiple small sites, each of which could have a large number of units. So I'm not trying to, to say there's anything wrong with assisted living or nursing homes. We have an assisted living facility at Fox Hill Village now. We have an assisted living facility on University Avenue. Both projects are, are wonderful and provide, you know, a use that is needed. But this property is already a commercial use. And changing it to either of those uses just puts it on the wrong side of the ledger for the town. And for that reason, I'd want to avoid that. So I think you could make this change in a, without making a whole lot of verbiage changes to the bylaw and do it in a way that is clear and easy for voters to understand and easy for property owners and potential developers to understand. And I, and you could do that simply in the ARO district if you're not comfortable delving into FMUOD.
Thank you. That alleviates my concern greatly. I feel like, like that, that's kind of what I was getting at, is it's, like I said, it's yes and, it's, we can incentivize, but is there a way to kind of tighten up? Exactly what you just said. I guess my other question for you, and I do see two other hands, but just to guide the conversation a little bit, would staff recommend following the path of modifying the ARO zoning or follow the FMUD zoning?
That's my question.
So I can see benefits to both. I think the ARO and mending the ARO zoning is simple. And it is I, maybe less consequential because of the number of properties that are involved. Amending the FMUOD zoning to allow hotel as a use on all FMD UOD properties could be potentially even more beneficial from a fiscal point of view because there are, it takes all of the properties that the town has on Route one. I'm sorry, Route one twenty-eight takes all of those properties and makes hotel a possibility at all of them, which increases the likelihood of, of actually getting another hotel in town. But none of those properties are currently offered for sale, and it could be ten years before anyone looks at doing anything with any of those properties. So I don't have a, a strong feeling one way or the other. I do think that the reason that I would recommend a hotel either in the ARO or in the FMUOD five is because in all cases, the location is immediately off a highway. An easy ramp entrance and exit from both properties and likely to have less of a traffic effect on our local roads because of that.
Thank you. Phil, I see your hand up, I appreciate your patience.
Yeah, no, I, I, I go back to being, keeping it simple. Uh, I like the principal use table that Nora was just suggesting, nice and simple. I say we stay with ARO and don't try to take too much on for, you know, at this stage. We can certainly look, you know, next step, but if they're not as time sensitive a concern, uh, I think we can more deliberative, in a more deliberate manner, deliberative manner, we can look at that in the future, but I say hotel, ARO, keep it simple. That's my twenty cents.
Thank you. Sean, you had your hand up too?
Yeah, and that, I guess my question, one more question for staff was, you know, if, if, if we went the FMUOD route, which not all of my colleagues may want to go, but if we went that route, and I think there is a simple way to do that, which is largely just including hotel as an accepted use in FMUOD five. But if we go that route, is there a corresponding sort of disincentive that we can build in that would still achieve what we want to achieve in terms of I, I think nursing homes. There was a clear one, if we go the table of uses route, which is including a footnote that says, you know, that has to be above ten acres or whatever. But is there a clear kind of equivalent mechanism that we can use if we are focusing more on the FMUOD side of things? I don't know if that's making sense or not, that probably, okay.
It makes sense, I don't think there is, because the FMUOD is an option. Underlying zoning is really what dictates what you can and cannot do on a property. Overlay zoning gives another option over and above that, but you cannot force a property owner or a developer to develop under the overlay district.
Okay.
So they would still always have the opportunity to develop for any by right or special permit use in the underlying zoning.
So to clarify, it sounds like if we want to do any kind of disincentive on the residential side, we're better off sticking to doing something with the table of uses.
I believe we are.
Okay.
Thank you. So if I'm, if I'm reading the room. So if I'm if I'm reading the room correctly, the consensus seems to be pursue the ARO option, the table of uses and adding the allowed use. I'm seeing thumbs up from people. All right. Um, is there any other discussion, comments, questions from board members or staff before I open it up to public comment on this proposed warrant article?
Uh, I I just wanna, sorry, Sean, I saw your hand, but I started talking first. I'm sorry. I just want to say this is literally the planning part. This is the planning part. So thank you very much, everybody, for for um, helping me work my way through this. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate. Sean, yes?
I if I've I've had my mind wrapped around the FMUOD route for so long that if we do go this ARO route and kind of focus more on on the table of uses, I just it maybe this is a staff activity kind of outside of this, but I'd want to look at other parts of the arrow portion of the bylaw or anywhere that's mentioned and just make sure what we're allowing in terms of hotel is there's nothing that's gonna constrain or box in the hotel use in such a way that it's still kind of is actively disincentivizing a hotel. And there there might not be, but I don't I at first glance, I don't know kind of what uh, the height restrictions look like for the ARO district. Um, or or other kind of standards around ARO. So I or the dimensional setbacks, for example. The same time, I wa- I also want to make sure that all those setbacks are going to be uh, useful in terms of the abutting residential community because I don't I don't want us to get a bad project out of this either. I don't want to get a bad hotel project, if that makes sense. I want certainly a project that works for everyone and contributes a lot to the town.
Thank you. All right. Um, if there's no further discussion amongst board members and staff. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. I'll open up the floor to public comment on this proposed warrant article. I do see a hand raised and something in the Q and A, but just a quick reminder, we'll need your full name and address. Uh, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak live, and we are trying to keep it to three minutes per speaker. Um, let's start with the live. I see one hand raised.
All right.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Sandra Castellini. I'm at fifty four Birch Street. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I understand this is really the first opportunity for residents in the area that um, can comment on this project. And I've really been interested in your conversation. Um, we are a very residential community. Um, we are also within walking distance to the elementary school. The bus is not provided because it's within walking distance to Downey Elementary School. And I have to say that I have concerns about adding um, the hotel use to the ARO district. Um, and I I have concerns about these restrictions. I feel like this has been a very kind of fly at the seat of our pants right before we can s- stick it into the warrant article. Um, I don't think we've vetted any of the residents' concerns. One of my concerns is um, this this property is not for sale. I understand there's been some inquiries about it, but are we doing the same kind of scrutiny around other large commercial properties and and putting in preventative, you know, types of zoning? Um, I it's my understanding that we've been giving TIFs and we've given, you know, in lieu of taxes and really huge tax benefits to other properties. Why are we all of a sudden worrying about this property that's very close to, you know, single family residential properties? So I just don't think it makes sense. I think it's something that needs to be considered and vetted, and I um, ask that this committee consider not adding any language to the warrant article and keeping it as is for AOR.
Thank you. I'm looking to see if there's any other hands up. I don't see any other hands up for public comment. There is, it looks like one comment in the Q and A. I can read it or if if you want to take it, Elijah.
Uh, yes, so uh, Robert Gotti, fifty five Rock Meadow Road. I'm in full support of this change in order to encourage the highest and best commercial use of this property. We have a need to increase our commercial tax or our commercial base to help provide tax relief to residential property owners as well as ensuring maintenance of our split tax rate. So ensuring this remains commercial versus any prospective residential use is critically important.
Thank you. Uh, as far as opportunities for public participation, this this discussion, this public hearing will continue through like the next pretty much meetings up until town meeting, correct?
Uh, at least the end of uh, March for sure, yes.
Right, okay. Um, so uh, I'm I'm hoping that means there'll be lots of other opportunity for for public participation, and and I do encourage any and all residents who want to engage on any of the warrant articles to attend, or if you can't attend, feel free to send uh, questions, comments, feedback a- ahead of our meetings along to Elijah, and he can disseminate that to the board. Um, because we do, we want to hear from everybody. So I appreciate people who have come tonight. Uh, I did see, Kate, did you have your hand up? Nora, thank you.
Thank you. So a couple of things. One, I just wanted point out from a public participation point of view. Uh, the board has been discussing articles ahead of its public hearing inform forming the articles and what needs to be done at several um, meetings since the fall. Uh, this is one that came up, I think, for the first time in November. I believe we first started discussing it. Um, and at all of those meetings, the board took any public comments that came. But this is the official hearing. The hearing starts today. It will be continued to the um, Finance and Warrant Commission Public Hearing on February twenty fifth. Then it will be continued to the next Planning Board Meeting on March fourth. Um, I believe there's another meeting on March eighteenth, which I would expect you to continue the hearing to that date, and then back to the second uh, Finance and Warrant Commission Meeting on March twenty fifth. So each of these opportunities is an opportunity to discuss the proposed articles and to revise them as the planning board sees fit. So we've had drafts. Uh, we had the initial draft we advertised, and we've amended um, the the staff recommendation for language on each of the articles as it's gone on. Uh, so it's not last minute. It's something that we have been thinking um, and crafting options fairly carefully. And I want to point out that we look at all properties in town, and we are constantly reviewing our zoning to see what would be appropriate for different areas in the town and where we need to make changes to make projects move forward. We also work with property owners, property owners who are looking to sell their property and people who are looking to build property to bring to come into Westwood to add especially to our commercial tax base. So we are always doing that. We have our eyes open all the time, and we're talking to um, especially commercial property owners all the time to try and and stay ahead of the curb, make sure we're getting what's best for residents to pay the bills for all the things that Westwood residents appreciate, uh, not the least of which is our wonderful school system. So the money has to come somewhere. Um, and a lot of it comes from our commercial tax base through our split tax. I want to also just comment um, about tax increment financing. So in the thirty four years I've lived in town, there have been two tax increment financing projects that have been approved by voters. The first was um, that they've actually had TIFs that have been offered. The first was for Romano Container on University Avenue many, many years ago, long before University Station, even before Westwood Station, I believe. Um, and that was a project that kept that business in town. Then we had the Citizens Bank Building. Um, that project was granted a TIF by the Select Board on the Authorization of Town Meeting in twenty nineteen. If not for that TIF, that building would not have existed. Um, it brings in considerable tax dollars to the town, none of which we would have received. We would have still had a vacant building there. Um, especially since it's an office building that we were able to see developed there since the pandemic. There are very few office buildings being constructed. So that was a uh, a forward thinking and very beneficial project to the town. Voters at the next town meeting will have an opportunity to consider Westwood's third TIF in the last thirty some odd years. And that one is for a proposed hotel at University Station, the Home Two Hotel. Um, that's a project that the Planning Board approved back in twenty twenty two. And partially due to uh, the pandemic, to supply chain issues, to changing cost of construction, that project was no longer feasible for the developers to go forward with. However, if voters are inclined to give the Select Board the authorization to grant a TIF, and if the Select Board decides to do that, we will see significant income by the immediate development of a hotel, not just the property tax income and the personal property tax income that comes along with that, but the meals and hotels tax. A hotel is the most profitable, uh, fiscally profitable use we can have on a commercial property in Westwood and something that we're very much encouraging. So um, just since the TIFs were brought up, just an opportunity to to remind everyone why they're important and why voters get a say in that. There it's true that it a TIF offers a discount in the initial years of a development, but it offers a small discount in order to incentivize a large profit to the town. So that's why that's going forward. Um, as far as this article, it has been thought out. We advertised it very broadly to give you options to consider changes to the ARO, changes to the FMUOD for both. Um, and that's for you to discuss tonight. So tonight is your first official public hearing on this, and it's the appropriate time for you to be making decisions about how you want to go forward. I recommend that you develop a path tonight so that when you go to the FinCom, you can express that path and then hear more comments. Um, it's possible that you'll change that path after hearing more comments, but I think you should um, be thinking tonight about which way you think is most appropriate to go. And then staff will continue to work on the specific language and send that back to the planning board for further consideration.
Thank you, Nora. Kate?
Yeah, thank you. I I I just want to um, thank all the residents. I do want to reiterate um, what Nora said, that our staff is always, always looking at properties across town and um, and considering what's happening with them now, what could potentially be happening in the future, when is the right time to take action? So um, so I I appreciate the question, but that is the answer. Um, it's always, and it's all i- it's across the entire town. The other thing I I just wanted to say is that we're we're not, you know, we're not talking, I'm not talking tonight about um, changing something from a residence residential use to a commercial use. This is a commercial property currently. And so we're talking about, I'm talking about how to move forward with a commercial property, and I I am very sensitive to the lives of the abutters to the property, but it is a commercial property, and um, I'm viewing it. I I'm viewing it as such. So I I hear all of your concerns, but um, but but that is where I'm this point I'm starting from is it's a commercial property with lots of possible uses. How do we shape that as best as possible so that we get the the what I would view as the best results, and and we might not all agree on what that is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. I see another hand up in the attendees, and we have at least three comments in the Q and A. Um, let's keep going with the live, and then we can go through the Q and A after we're done with live speakers.
Uh, yes.
Um, thank you, guys. Uh, Rob Gotti, fifty five Rock Meadow Road, and uh, you know, from what I've heard from residents in the neighborhood, I think some of their biggest concerns revolve around traffic. Um, they do have a lot of cut through traffic during rush hour due to ways and other traffic mapping apps, and I might suggest that any sugge- uh, further project for this redevelopment of the site would likely come before the Planning Board, at which time, you know, traffic consideration uh, discussion might take place. So, you know, if there's ways to mitigate some of that, I think that would be something that I would think the residents of the abutting neighborhood would appreciate if uh, this board were to consider that for any future redevelopment projects.
Thank you, Rob. Nora?
I just want to point out that that Rob is correct. Anything that is done that's a change of use to that property, anything other than continuing as an office use would require them to come to the planning board to for an EIDR, Environmental Impact Design Review, approval of a change of use. And then for certain uses that are permitted by special permit in the ARO, they would have to also go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So there would be a a dual approval that would be necessary. For by right uses in the ARO, it would simply be coming to the the Planning Board. If a future property owner wanted to just continue an office use there and did not might want to make any changes to the site or the exterior of the building, that would be allowed by right, just by going to a building permit. Anything else would require at least a planning board approval, if not a planning board and zoning board.
Thank you, Nora. I'm not seeing any other hands raised to speak live, so I think at this point it makes sense to move to the the Q and A.
Yes. Uh, so the first one is fifty four Birch Street, Sandra Castellini. Uh, I wanted to note that many of my neighbors had concerns, and I think the timing of this issue became too late to be involved. Right, um, we um, uh, as mentioned previously, we did um, uh, start these conversations in uh, November. Um, and uh, so there are definitely more opportunities to um, speak and to look at this. Um, I'll just quickly share the list of upcoming meetings. Uh, we have uh, the February twenty fifth meeting, uh, potentially twenty sixth if it's carryover with the Finance and Warrant Commission. The Planning Board will be holding uh, meetings on March fourth, March eighteenth, uh, and then back again to the Finance and Warrant Commission on the twenty six, on the twenty fifth. Uh, and those will be the ultimately, those are the the slew of uh, meetings that you can uh, get engaged with. Um, let's see.
Elijah, if I may, I wonder, I think she she may have meant, I don't want to speak for someone else. She may have meant it was too late in the evening, not too late in the process, but too late in the evening. Maybe? To join the discussion possibly? Is there any way that that we would ever change the order to bring this up earlier in the evening to participation from residents?
Uh, yeah, I don't see a, I don't see I I think we could look at that at one of our upcoming meetings for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good question. As a point of order, there's nothing that prevents us correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there's nothing that prevents us as a board on our agenda taking these warrant articles out of order. We don't have to go sequentially, correct? We could discuss this one first next.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And in addition, many past boards have um, just listed the articles and then asked who's in the audience that wants to speak to Article One, to Article Two, and then they put them in the order where there's the greatest number of people looking to speak.
I think moving forward, now that we have a sense of which articles are generating the most interest, that would be the right thing to do at at our subsequent meetings. So thank you for that, Kate. And everybody.
Uh, so the next comment um, from Tim, uh, you would have to please state your
Yeah, I'm listening to something. Yeah, can I call you back up in two minutes?
Uh, I'm just gonna um, mute you just um, uh, you can unmute yourself if needed. Uh, so the um, the next comment is from Tim, but uh, you would need to state your full name and a street address for me to be able to read this into the public record. Uh, I will move on to the next one. Uh, Kimberly Lawton at one oh three Hawthorne Street. I completely support what Sandra discussed. The traffic alone is a huge issue on East Street already without increased traffic to this location with the hotel. It seems like we are thinking about the town of Westwood, but the increased noise and traffic could negatively impact on the value of our property in the neighborhood directly impacted. Uh, yes, so um, again, we uh, there are um, traffic issues that um, are preexisting, but this site uh, with its proximity are pre-existing, but this site with its proximity to the highway would, I I believe incur traffic that goes in and out of the highway as opposed to crosstown traffic. Next question is from, or sorry, the next comment is from Kim Cross. Kim and Doug Cross, one thirty-five Elm Street. Good evening. I understand the financial impacts of changing the land from commercial to residential. Wouldn't adding language, R E, number of bed slash units for nursing home limited enough that no true buyer would convert it to residential? I don't understand why we need to add in incentives of a hotel, especially given the there is no true need for a hotel, given there is one across the rotary. Hotels to me add a lot of negative impacts to our residential neighborhood. Is noted and will be taken into consideration as we move forward with this process, for sure. And then just a reminder to Tim, if they are looking to have their public comment read into the record, you can comment your full name and street address. Otherwise, we are, I I not read it. Thank you.
Thanks, Elijah. We can give that a minute. And if if we're provided with that name and address, we can always come back to it. I think we have a couple more articles to go over so that if if Tim's able to update us with his full name and address, we can read his comment into the record, you know, towards the end of this.
Oh, it it just came in.
Wonderful.
So Tim Sullivan and Patty Rockinsize, sixty-nine Hawthorne Street. I agree with Sandra, Rock Meadow Road is not near Meditec. Those of us with houses near Meditec are not just looking at financial benefits of the change. Please ask those of us directly impacted. We are also worried about traffic. Yes. All right, that has been noted. Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. We got a lot of good feedback on that. So thank you to all the residents who came and shared their thoughts with us. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, nor am I seeing anything else in the Q and A. There's, I see Kate, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did just want to say for for those residents who are joining us for tonight and may not have been watching our other meetings that we've had this year, I would say we spend an hour a week in our meetings talking about traffic. Westwood is significantly impacted by traffic. All of our neighborhoods are are struggling with managing what Waze has has done and the the positives and negatives of of being so close to ninety-five and one twenty-eight. So so we definitely are hearing this all the time, but but we are still listening. I am still listening to that, like I I'm hearing it. Just know that you're not alone, and and most of our boards, the select board as well, we're we're just the town of Westwood is significantly affected by traffic, significantly affected. And so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Were there any other comments or questions? Sean, yes.
I do, you know, feel first, let me start back and and say to the residents who came tonight, thank you for for sharing your feedback. Again, I think it's it's really valuable for us to to hear all of it, and it it gives us a lot to to think about as over the course of the next set of meetings between now and the end of March is we consider this along with all the other warrant articles. So I appreciate you coming tonight. It's really helpful information. Gives us a lot to think about. In the vein of all those concerns, there's always concerns about traffic, about, you know, the space between your property and 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 what's what's happening with a commercially used property and everything else that goes along with that. My question is for staff, which is what would be the substantial differences in the review process if we pursued this the via the flexible mixed-use overlay district route versus the ARO route? And potential outcomes for the abutters, too?
So the ARO district has very specific setback and height requirements, whereas the FMUOD district has more flexible requirements. The ARO district has the ZBA that sits as the special permit granting authority, and the FMUOD has the planning board sitting as the special permit granting authority. If this was, if you, the board decided to pursue changes to the ARO to add hotel as a proposed allowed use in the ARO by special permit by the ZBA, then you would have a dual process for any approval where EIDR approval would have to go through the planning board and then special permit approval through the zoning board. If the decision was to go with just adding hotel as an allowed use in the FMUOD district and overlaying this property with FMUOD, then it would be a single review process by the planning board with less, less defined dimensional requirements. There would just be more flexibility there. The dimensional requirements are more hard and fast if it's in the ARO zone, including a substantial buffer zone that comes into play in the ARO. So that's, those are the conditions that the property currently falls under. It has a substantial buffer zone and very discreet setback requirements, height requirements. If it went to FMUOD, that would be more flexible, and the planning board would be able to consider proposals on their merits and decide where what the appropriate dimensional requirements would be.
All right, thank you. And then I guess my second question would be to the board as a whole, are kind of what's our bearing for? What's our bearing for tonight? I'm curious to hear what what the other board members think. Not to not trying to step on anyone's feet there. I'm just, I I want to get us towards a goal of what we can have for the Finance and Warrant Commission.
Thank you. I think that's important for us to discuss, so I'm happy to hear my colleagues' thoughts. Kate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say to Nora, Nora, you and I have the same problem where the yellow hand that we raise is on top of something yellow. That you raised your hand. So I, I, my, my thoughts are that I think that we should move forward. And I believe that the best way to move forward is through the ARO with changes to the table that that Phil had had said. And so so I'm happy to take understanding that if a project comes before this board, there are things we can do at that place and time, but what's before us right now is is zoning. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Phil?
I'll just echo what I had said before. I think the sense of the board tonight hopefully will be, we've been talking about adding hotel at least since November. I know that was before Thanksgiving. And I think the ARO and the principal table is what we should be doing for tonight and going forward.
Thank you, Phil. Sean?
I will endorse or personally endorse moving forward with with the ARO right now, knowing that we can keep the door open and the conversation open throughout this process to the more flexible approach if we ultimately decide that's going to be better. I do take some solace in the fact that this approach with the ARO will will create sort of two layers of review. Anything would still go through the planning board's EIDR process, and we get, as we all know on this board, and as Kate, as you mentioned earlier, we give a lot of time and consideration to concerns ranging from traffic and noise and lighting and landscaping. And and I actually think it's a strength of this current board that we give so much consideration to all those things. We really try to be good listeners to everyone from abutters to the broader set of residents on on that front. So I I certainly know that that would be part of our process. If if anything were were to kind of come of all of this. And then secondly, it's got a second layer of view with the zoning board of appeals as well. And I think and and what, anything that the special permit requires there. So that gives me gives it a second opportunity for public engagement. Makes sense, I think, to to have that for a project like this. And then finally, I'd say I would endorse, including a footnote with the kind of disincentive that that Nora suggested around the residential uses, not because those uses are necessarily bad or something we don't want in this town. There are things we certainly want in this town, but I think in this case where we've got a commercially used property, we want to keep it on the commercial side of the ledger, and I'd endorse whatever language our our planning and community and economic development staff suggest on that front.
Thank you. Nora, is your hand up from before or for now?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's from before. Sorry. I didn't even see if it was up.
I I didn't want to not acknowledge you if you had something to add.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, it it sounds like the board has reached consensus. I'm seeing people nodding. All right, then, is there anything else we as a board need to do on that one this evening? I I feel like we've we've kind of taken a stance and and given direction, and that staff will work on the language, and we'll review it at our next meeting or prior, when we get our materials for the next meeting. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands raised anywhere, nor am I seeing anything else in the Q and A. So with that, I think we should move on to proposed article PB six.
All right. So the next part is housekeeping amendments. Honestly, this section amends, you know, some errors or inconsistencies, as well as clarifying parts of the bylaw. I can share the the long-form notice for the board to take a look. Some of it is literally the kind of scriven as errors. Others are clarifying, such as, you know, adding a word. Adjusting, you know, numbers on the parking table, correcting wordage, and further clarification.
Thank you. Any board member discussion or questions around, excuse me, the housekeeping articles? I'm not seeing any hands raised. I did not at this time have any comments or questions. If there's nothing from board members or staff, I'll open up the floor to public comment on housekeeping amendments. Please feel free to raise your hand or enter your question or comment in the Q and A. Full name and address, please. I'm not seeing any hands raised, nor am I seeing anything entered in the Q and A. I think that one's fairly straightforward anyway. So with that, I'm happy for us to move on to proposed article PB seven.
Yes, so this so the next one is to remove major business development, not district, should read major business development. And again, it should be major, major business development, the deletion of seven point two of the bylaw and any sections that reference it. As we had mentioned in a previous meeting, this section of the bylaw is outdated, especially with some of the districts such as the flexible multiple-use overlay district, FMUOD, and the University Avenue Mixed Use District, UAMUD, both spur and regulate the economic development that the MBD had previously looked to to address. And furthermore, the inclusion of MBD in the Section Four Use Regulations poses a liability and could open the door to unallowed uses per ours owning bylaw.
Thank you. I'm sorry, was that?
That's it, yes.
Okay, just checking. All right. Well, any questions or comments from board members on proposed article seven? If anyone wanted to, we'll take a peek at the language if anyone had anything they wanted to add or any questions?
I do see Nora's hand here.
Oh, thank you. Oh, yes. Thank you, Nora.
So I just wanted to point out that the main thing this does is take out the major, major business development section of the bylaw, but that's referenced in more than fifty places throughout the bylaws. So wherever it's referenced, it also removes the term. But there are a couple of areas where just removing the term major business development doesn't meet the intent of the rest of the section. So if you want to go through any of the specific portions of this article to look at how we would handle those. In most cases, we've removed major business development and replaced it with environmental impact and design review approval. So where you would otherwise be looking to the planning board's issuance of a major business development special permit, now you're just looking at the terms, the the planning board's approval of EIDR, granting of an EIDR approval. There are a couple of areas where that is a little bit tricky. And I just want to make sure that this is the way the board would want to handle that. So if you go down to Section Eight of this proposed zoning article, there's a section of our bylaw that deals with floor area ratio. It's almost never comes up, but it could for a larger development. Right now, the zoning bylaw allows floor area ratios in highway business, industrial office, and administrative research office districts of point four percent. So what that means is for every acre of land, you could have a building footprint of point, a floor area of point four acres. So just to give you an idea, it talks about how much development could be on a on a property. It's not just the footprint of the foundation, but it's the floor area of each level. So that dictates how big a building you can have on a property. So right now, that points to major business development. In the case of a major business development, the planning board could allow for a greater FAR, a greater floor area ratio. In this case, I think it's up to point eight instead, so doubling the floor area ratio if they apply their major business development review to the process. When we get rid of major business development, now you apply your environmental impact design review standards to the process, but it still requires a special permit, not any IDR. So I think that's something the board might want to come back at a future date and establish very specific criteria for floor area ratio special permits. I don't, I think it would, depending on how you would want to do it, I don't know if you would exceed the advertisement of this article. So just just to point that out, what we've done is an interim, say, if you want a higher floor area ratio, the planning board can grant a special permit. floor area ratio, the planning board can grant a special permit, but they have to look to the standards in their EIDR process to, to issue that special permit. And it doesn't adopt different standards over and above what you would normally apply. I think your EIDR standards are very comprehensive. So I think, I think you address everything, but you might want to give that some more thought in the future. And the same thing is in part nine. That's where an FAR, FAR floor area ratio limitation in an industrial district is allowed at point six percent, but the planning board could issue a special permit for up to one point oh. So you, right now, you would still issue the special permit, but rely on your EIDR standards.
Thank you. Yeah, it, it sounds like that is something that the board might want to revisit at a later date, but not necessarily at this time. Was there anything else as part of this that we should address this evening?
The only other thing I'd point out is that this requires significant renumbering throughout the zoning bylaw. So for instance, your EIDR section has always been section seven point three, that will become section seven point two. And the current section seven point three, the seven point three will move to another number. So it's, it's a lot of renumbering. It's not a problem. Our, all of our decisions reference not just the number, but the title of the section and explain what they are. So it's not the case that you'd go back to an old approval and not be able to figure out what section the bylaw was attached to, but it will just take getting used to. Because it, by pulling out a, a significant section in Westwood, we never reserve sections. Some towns do that rather than have to change their numbers. They just say delete it and section reserved. We actually renumber everything. So just something to keep in mind. It's more an administrative headache than anything else.
Thank you. And that is unfortunate, but thanks for the heads up on that. Any other discussion from board members or staff on proposed article number seven?
I agree that we revisit FAR, but otherwise it looked good. I went through it all and had no comments.
Thank you, Phil. Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of making this change as well. I see a thumbs up from Kate. I think we're in consensus based on previous discussions as well, as well, that this is the right thing to do. All right. If there's no further discussion amongst boards, board members and staff at this time, I'll open up the floor to public comment on proposed article seven. Please feel free to enter something into the Q and A or raise your hand and we will enable you to speak. Full name and address, please, and three minutes per speaker. I'll give that a moment. I'm not seeing any hands raised, nor am I seeing anything in the Q and A. So with that, I will end, close the public comment portion of this public hearing and if there's no further discussion from board members or staff, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for consideration of proposed zoning bylaw amendment and general bylaw amendment warrant articles to an in-person meeting of the planning board on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, and the main library community meeting room at 660 High Street, Westwood, Mass, beginning at 7:00 PM.
Excuse me, if you could say or to, we don't know for sure that that's going to be an in-person meeting. It could end up being a virtual meeting. So I think you need to add language saying if that meeting is scheduled for a virtual meeting to continue your hearing to that meeting, whether it's virtual or in person. Maybe you say at a location to be determined and reference the calendar. I know we, we ran into this last year, so I can go back and see if I can find the language that we used last year while you're discussing this. So if you could just hold off on making that motion.
What if I just start reading it super slowly, Nora?
We don't want to run into a situation where we lose our chain of our hearing.
For sure. Thank you.
And do we want to add the 26th also?
Well, it would be continued to the 25th. And then if you need to continue it on the 25th, you'd continue it from the 20.
Just see if I can find motions from last year.
No, we said an inter, we said an in-person meeting last year too. So maybe it was the year before. I remember going through this once before where we had an either or option. I, I, I'm not seeing something, but I think what you'd want to say is that you will continue it to the meeting of the Finance and Warrant Commission on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, beginning at 7:00 PM via Zoom, where a Zoom link and associated call in numbers will be provided on the town's calendar on the homepage at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot Town Hall dot Westwood dot MA dot US backslash, or if that meeting is scheduled to be in person at the community room of the public library at six, at 660 High Street. I think you want to put both in there. So you're continuing it to the place and time certain, but unfortunately the place is not certain yet.
Well, as you're muted.
Can you repeat that last part after the Finance and War Commission meeting? So it's an in-person meeting.
So I think you'd want to have the continuation, the same language you use to continue your general meetings to playing board meetings that are that are virtual. You want to say that first and then say, or if the meeting of the Finance and Warren Commission is held in person to continue the hearing to the same time and place at the main library community meeting room, 660 High Street. So if you just pull the language from your standard motion about the calendar page of the it looks like it would say via Zoom. So go, go up to the second. Take out the words to an in-person meeting. And you would just say, continue. All right. So I, you would, I blank move that the playing board continue the public hearing for consideration of proposed zoning bylaw amendment and general bylaw. There's no general bylaw. Take out the general bylaw. So proposed zoning bylaw amendment warrant articles to a meeting of the Finance and Warrant Commission via Zoom on Tuesday, March 7th. I'm sorry, Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. That's right, via Zoom. At 7:00 PM. Yeah, and it say it after, after, sorry, after February 25th, 2005 at 7:00 PM. And then say where a Zoom link and associated call in numbers will be provided on the town's calendar on the homepage at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot Town Hall dot Westwood dot MA dot US backslash. Or if the Finance Warrant Commission meeting is held in person, the hearing will take place in the main library, community meeting room at 660 High Street, Westwood, Massachusetts, beginning at 7:00 PM. So either way, it's the same date, the same time. And you, you have a, a calendar is misspelled. I think that covers the options.
That works.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we, would this be an amended motion or just kind of a do-over?
I'm just going to do it over. Okay. I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for consideration of proposed zoning bylaw amendment and warrant articles to a meeting of the Finance and Warrant Commission via Zoom on Tuesday, February 20, 20, February 25th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, where a Zoom link and associated call in numbers will be provided on the town's calendar on the homepage at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot Town Hall dot Westwood dot MA dot US forward slash, or if the Finance and Warrant Commission meeting is in person, the meeting will take place in the main library community meeting room at 660 High Street, Westwood, Mass, beginning at 7:00 PM.
Could you just turn, instead of meeting, hearing in that last sentence, the hearing will take place in the meeting, in the main library community room?
The, thank you. Quick correction. The hearing will take place in the main library community meeting room at 660 High Street, Westwood, Mass, beginning at 7:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Kate?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. Our public hearing is continued. All right. Thanks, everyone. Our next agenda item is the minutes from the review of draft meetings from January 28th, 2025. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes? And did anyone have any suggestions or changes they would like to request?
No changes. I reviewed.
Same. I had nothing that I wanted to add. If nobody has anything they want to change, then I would entertain a motion.
I move that the planning board approve the minutes for the meeting of January 28th, 2025 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Sean?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. The meeting minutes are accepted. Thank you. Next agenda item is miscellaneous updates, general miscellaneous updates and administrative items. I'll ask staff, is there anything you would like to share with us for this agenda item? Take that as a no. I'm seeing that. All right. Well, that was easy. Then we can move on to number seven, agency and committee updates, updates from agency and committee representatives. Has anyone attended any meetings or any other organizational events that they'd like to report out on?
Not since our last meeting.
Me neither.
Same. That's another quick one. All right. Then I'll move on to our last agenda item, which is upcoming meetings. We have board meetings coming up on March 4th, 2025 and March 18th, 2025. We also have the Finance and Warrant Commission Article Sponsors Meetings on February 25th, 2025 and the 26th if needed, and March 25th, 2025 and March 26th if needed. And that is all we have on the agenda. So if nobody else has anything they wanted to add, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Kate, you're up.
So.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Kate?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for all your work this evening.
Have a great night, everyone.